Good evening, I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Landman?
Present.
Councilmember Dubala?
I'm here.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Hansak?
Present.
Councilmember Westle?
Here.
Mayor Circe?
Here. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are joining you all a little bit later than 7:30 today because before our regular meeting, the city council met in an administrative function to continue the evaluation of outside legal firms to perform an independent audit related to the events giving rise to the litigation known as Cooper v. City of Tacoma Park. Following the session, the city council is currently convening in the auditorium for its regular meeting. In terms of agenda items for this evening, we will start with the first item, which is a proclamation in recognition of Juneteenth. Tonight, we will have a presentation, the Purple Line Connector Grant New Ave Bike Ways Project. We will then have voting sessions this evening. The first item is Second Reading Ordinance Approving FY26 Budget Amendment Number Four, Second Reading Ordinance Approving Community Quality of Life Grant Recommendations, and the Single Reading Ordinance Awarding a Grant for Summer Lunch and Learn Services. On the work sessions this evening, the first item is contract for library solar panels. The second is the ASME Council Relations Overview. In terms of upcoming meetings, I just want to encourage folks to join us in celebration of Juneteenth. Thursday, June the 19th, which is tomorrow, is Juneteenth. City offices and facilities are closed for the Juneteenth holiday. On Sunday, June the 22nd to Wednesday, June the 23rd, the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference will be taking place in Ocean City. Many of us will be attending that event. Wednesday, June the 25th, the city council will not meet as a result of the conference. On Wednesday, July the 2nd, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will start with a presentation on the Library and Community Center project update. Voting session will include a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for library solar panels and work sessions involving the board and committee appointment recommendations. On Friday, July the 4th, is Independence Day. City offices and facilities are closed for the Independence Day holiday. On Wednesday, July the 9th, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. The first will be a voting session on resolutions providing for appointments to boards and committees, followed by a work session on the Public Safety Task Force recommendations follow-up. On Wednesday, July the 16th, the city council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We have two work sessions. The first is the FY26 Budget Amendment Number One, and the second is a second work session on the Public Safety Task Force recommendations follow-up. And so with that, I will move to our first item this evening, which is a proclamation in recognition of Juneteenth, Day of Observance, which is June the 19th, 2025. Whereas the first enslaved Africans were brought as captives to what is now the Commonwealth of Virginia in 1619, and whereas black people were bought and sold as slave labor for 250 years and suffered unspeakable acts of violence, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1st, 1863, freeing the enslaved people of the South. However, Southern slave owners in areas still under Confederate control ignored that order. On June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, and enforced the President's order, freeing the enslaved two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since become known as Juneteenth. And whereas other systems of oppression, such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, mass incarceration, and the police violence against black bodies, continue throughout our country's history. And whereas despite the progress made in the fight for civil rights, African-American communities across the nation continue to face systematic inequalities, including disparities in wealth, education, housing, healthcare, and employment opportunities, as well as ongoing racial profiling, police brutality, and voter suppression efforts that threaten to undermine their fundamental civil liberties and human rights. And whereas the city council recognizes the history of racism in our country and how it has led to many of these current-day disparities. And whereas in 2021, President Biden signed legislation that made Juneteenth a federal holiday, and the city council adopted ordinance 2021-41, recognizing Juneteenth as an annual day of remembrance and a paid city holiday. And whereas the city of Tacoma Park is a welcoming community that celebrates and honors its African-American residents, culture, history, and contributions to the nation. And whereas the city of Tacoma Park is committed to furthering diversity, equity, and inclusion despite challenges that exist. Now therefore, I, Talisha Circe, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, along with the city council, staff, and residents, do hereby recognize Thursday, June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth to acknowledge the historical significance of the day and commit the city to working to advance race equity. Now we are going to move to public comments on voting items. Thank you very much. As a reminder, voting items this evening are: A Second Reading Ordinance Approving FY26 Budget Amendment Number Four, Single Reading Ordinance Approving Community Quality of Life Grant Recommendations, the Single Reading Ordinance Awarding a Grant for Summer Lunch and Learn Services. Do we have any public comments this evening on voting items?
Good evening. Shayna Fulcher, Executive Director of Lunch and Learn, here with my mentoring director, Doris Duarte. So this year, we are really excited that we're supported again and recommended by the Recreation Department to be the recipient of the grant that we depend on to make this camp that will be serving approximately 175 students. We're spending less than $1,000 per student to make six weeks of summer camp happen. And this is an educational summer camp. Really excited by the teachers that are joining us this year. I'm gonna try to keep it together with the excitement, but I'm just really happy about who I see who answered our call when we were looking for teachers. They're all so enthusiastic about joining us as well. These students are gonna have an amazing summer. As a camp director for Girl Scout Camp, I can attest to the fact that all camps are seeing a big change in children's desire to actually join in in summer vacation, sorry, in summer school, sorry, summer camps this year, that we just haven't been seeing over the last five years. All of a sudden, everybody's ready to go. And so that's why we're seeing the big change in numbers of students joining us this year. One of the changes that we've made is we will be having 14 high school students join us this year, so I know that that was a priority for the city. We're having a hard time making our summer youth program happen for employment, and so 14 students will be joining us at Lunch and Learn to help. We also have 40 middle school students joining us. We're gonna have them take care of running our physical education and arts and crafts classes. Excited to help them in their leadership on that. Another change that I made because of my love of Girl Scouting and outdoors, we have an outdoor education teacher this year. She will be doing our social and emotional learning outside with like an environmental science twist to it, because I see lots of the parents and families enjoying these types of education for their kids that have the means to do it. And so I'd like to make sure that we also see our other friends in Tacoma Park get it. I don't know how much you guys looked into our budget, but we spend a lioness's share on employing our teachers. That is where our money goes to, is employing high-quality people to come in and work with our students. Yeah? Do you have anything you want to add? Oh, she's, sorry, I'm out of time.
It's my turn now. You got two more seconds.
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Hi. I would like to thank the city council and Montgomery County for the funding. Lunch and Learn was founded in 2013 by the late co-founder Jaquet Frazier. And we just want to thank y'all so much. The kids are so excited. We would like to invite the city council members to the camp to make sure that y'all can get to see. Also, junior leadership will receive SSL hours, because we found out some of the kids do not have enough hours. We were told some of the kids only need 13 hours. And another thing, what we'd like this year, all the students will get a pre- and post-test. The previous years, we did from grades one to five. This year, we're gonna make sure they get a pre- and post-test for every student that attend, because what we found out last year, that the middle school and high school kids have problems with math. So if y'all want to call and stop by, you can call and stop by. So we really appreciate y'all. Also, every employee has to get a background check. We make sure that is done.
Solar panels. The second is the ASME Council Relations Overview. In terms of upcoming meetings, I just want to encourage folks to join us in celebration of Juneteenth. Thursday, June the nineteenth, which is tomorrow, is Juneteenth. City offices and facilities are closed for the Juneteenth holiday. On Sunday, June the twenty-second to Wednesday, June the twenty-third, the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference will be taking place in Ocean City. Many of us will be attending that event. Wednesday, June the twenty-fifth, the city council will not meet as a result of the conference. On Wednesday, July the second, the council will meet at its regular time of seven thirty. We will start with a presentation on the Library and Community Center project update. Voting session will include a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for library solar panels and work sessions involving the board and committee appointment recommendations. On Friday, July the fourth, is Independence Day. City offices and facilities are closed for the Independence Day holiday. On Wednesday, July the ninth, the council will meet at its regular time of seven thirty. The first will be a voting session on resolutions providing for appointments to boards and committees, followed by a work session on the Public Safety Task Force Recommendations follow-up. On Wednesday, July the sixteenth, the city council will meet at its regular time of seven thirty. We have two work sessions. The first is the FY twenty-six budget amendment number one, and the second is a second work session on the Public Safety Task Force Recommendations follow-up. And so with that, I will move to our first item this evening, which is the proclamation in recognition of Juneteenth Day of Observance, which is June the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the first enslaved Africans were brought as captives to what is now the Commonwealth of Virginia in sixteen nineteen, and whereas black people were bought and sold as slave labor for two hundred and fifty years and suffered unspeakable acts of violence, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January first, eighteen sixty-three, freeing the enslaved people of the South. However, Southern slave owners in areas still under Confederate control ignored that order. On June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, and enforced the president's order, freeing the enslaved two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since become known as Juneteenth. And whereas other systems of oppression, such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, mass incarceration, and the police violence against black bodies, continue throughout our country's history. And whereas despite the progress made in the fight for civil rights, African-American communities across the nation continue to face systematic inequalities, including disparities in wealth, education, housing, healthcare, and employment opportunities, as well as ongoing racial profiling, police brutality, and voter suppression efforts that threaten to undermine their fundamental civil liberties and human rights. And whereas the city council recognizes the history of racism in our country and how it has led to many of these current-day disparities. And whereas in twenty twenty-one, President Biden signed legislation that made Juneteenth a federal holiday, and the city council adopted ordinance twenty-two-one dash forty-one, recognizing Juneteenth as an annual day of remembrance and a paid city holiday. And whereas the city of Tacoma Park is a welcoming community that celebrates and honors its African-American residents' culture, history, and contributions to the nation. And whereas the city of Tacoma Park is committed to furthering diversity, equity, and inclusion despite challenges that exist. Now therefore, I, Talisha Circe, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, along with the city council staff and residents, do hereby recognize Thursday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as Juneteenth to acknowledge the historical significance of the day and commit the city to working to advance race equity. Now we are going to move to public comments on voting items. Thank you very much. As a reminder, voting items this evening are: A second reading ordinance approving FY twenty-six budget amendment number four; Single reading ordinance approving community quality-of-life grant recommendations; The single reading ordinance awarding a grant for summer lunch and learn services. Do we have any public comments this evening on voting items?
Good evening. Shayna Fulcher, Executive Director of Lunch and Learn, here with my mentoring director, Doris Duarte. So this year, we are really excited that we're supported again and recommended by the Recreation Department to be the recipient of the grant that we depend on to make this camp that will be serving approximately one hundred and seventy-five students. We're spending less than a thousand dollars per student to make six weeks of summer camp happen. And this is an educational summer camp. Really excited by the teachers that are joining us this year. I'm gonna try to keep it together with the excitement, but I'm just really happy about who I see, who answered our call when we were looking for teachers. They're all so enthusiastic about joining us as well. These students are gonna have an amazing summer. As a camp director for Girl Scout Camp, I can attest to the fact that all camps are seeing a big change in children's desire to actually join in in summer vacation, sorry, in summer school, sorry, summer camps this year that we just haven't been seeing over the last five years. All of a sudden, everybody's ready to go. And so that's why we're seeing the big change in numbers of students joining us this year. One of the changes that we've made is we will be having fourteen high school students join us this year. So I know that that was a priority for the city. We're having a hard time making our summer youth program happen for employment. And so fourteen students will be joining us at Lunch and Learn to help. We also have forty middle school students joining us. We're gonna have them take care of running our physical education and arts and crafts classes. Excited to help them in their leadership on that. Another change that I made because of my love of Girl Scouting and outdoors, we have a outdoor education teacher this year. She will be doing our social and emotional learning outside with like an environmental science twist to it because I see lots of the parents and families enjoying these types of education for their kids that have the means to do it. And so I'd like to make sure that we also see our other friends in Tacoma Park get it. I don't know how much you guys looked into our budget, but we spend a lioness's share on employing our teachers. That is where our money goes to, is employing high-quality people to come in and work with our students. Yeah, do you have anything you wanna add? She's, sorry, I'm out of time.
Oh, it's my turn now. You got two more seconds.
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Hi, I would like to thank the city council and Montgomery County for the funding. Lunch and Learn was founded in two thousand thirteen by the late co-founder Jaquet Frazier. And we just wanna thank y'all so much. The kids are so excited. We would like to invite the city council members to the camp to make sure that y'all could get to see. Also, junior leadership will receive SSL hours because we found out some of the kids do not have enough hours. We were told some of the kids only need thirteen hours. And another thing, what we'd like this year, all the students will get a pre- and post-test. The previous years, we did from grades one to five. This year, we're gonna make sure they get a pre- and post-test for every student that attend. Because what we found out last year, that the middle school and high school kids have problems with math. So if y'all wanna call and stop by, you can call and stop by. So we really appreciate y'all. Also, every employee has to get a background check. We make sure that is done. This year, that is new, we will have baseball, and we have the gloves and we have the hats. So Kurt, if you wanna stop by and cheer, come on by. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments this evening on voting items?
Thank you. I want to simply, the first thing I want to say to the city council member is to express on behalf of the members of the Board of Directors a really deepest gratitude to all of you for your unanimous support. It's not just unanimous, but it's enthusiastic support from the city council. This program got started way back, as Mr. Duarte said, when I was on the city council. And I had no appreciation for what was the need or how it worked. But all of a sudden, I was asked by Jackie Frazier and Mr. Duarte to come to one of the parent nights at the end of the summer. And the children, and they asked me to talk to the children. The gymnasium full of kids, rambunctious kids, and I thought, good grief, what am I supposed to say that's gonna be of any interest to these youngsters? So I just decided to stand up there in front and talk about what my life was like when I was their age and how scared I was about camp and all the confusion that goes on in a child's life and went on and on about what it was like to be their age. And I found out later from Doris and others that the kids just loved the talk. And I thought, holy Christopher, I must have missed my calling. But in any case, that was my first exposure. I've been excited about the program ever since and been involved, a member of the board. Back about five years ago, Jackie called me up and said, now that we're no longer part of, you know, we're gonna be a standalone organization, we're gonna be a five oh one C three. And she said, I'd like you to be on the Board of Directors to help us talk about getting out the information to the public. And she said, you know, because you're really good with words. So I said, well, all right, I'll try my best. And so I did, and it's been, over my entire life, I can't tell you that there's been anything that, in my life, in terms of public service, that has given me more satisfaction and more joy to be able to do what we're doing here. And now that we've got a new executive director, the changes, the growth and the expansion of the program are really on schedule. So it's gonna be really exciting. So I just, again, wanna say thank you to all of you for your continued support. And it's gonna be exciting to sit back and watch what happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional public comments on voting items this evening? Do we have any virtual public comments on voting items? Okay, wonderful. We're going to move on to general.
I'm not gonna be long. I just wanted to show my appreciation and our appreciation to the council for all the help that you've given the Lunch and Learn camp over the years and especially with us losing our leader, great leader. I've provided you all with an ink pen and memos of Ms. Jackie, so enjoy.
Take care. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, I just automatically picked up this pen, so thank you. All right, do we have any public comments on non-voting items? General public comments this evening?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Karen Elrich, and Ward Five. One of the most important duties that we residents have elected you, our council, to perform is the duty to set policy. This is not the city manager's job. His primary responsibility under the city law is to properly administer the city's day-to-day affairs. Thank you. But the council is supposed to set the policies that will govern how he administers these affairs. Yet the council has failed to take responsibility for leading the major new policy review of our rent stabilization law. It is striking that the council has never voted in public about exactly what the goals and purpose of this review are and what is the scope of the review which should be included to achieve these goals. Without such a council agreement officially approved in a public vote, the city manager does not have the direction he needs to draft a request for proposals for the study that is clearly envisioned as the backbone of this policy review. But city staff and the absence of the council leadership has moved forward anyway, proposing last week, and I quote, "a draft scope of work for a policy review," unquote, of this law. Staff also proposed their own goals for a study and merely invited the council's feedback. I urge you to embrace your duty to lead such a major policy review of such a fundamental policy issue. Our rent stabilization law has been critical in promoting our community's most treasured values. It has helped us preserve a dense stock of deeply affordable housing. It has provided decades of stability and freedom from fear of displacement for thousands of our local families. It has been key to protecting our community's economic and racial diversity. All of these good outcomes, in turn, have supported the security, inclusivity, and the well-being of our entire community. I officially request and will submit in writing that the council schedule a work session to determine what the council goals are for the review of this law and also that the council schedule follow-up voting to both approve such goals and also approve the final draft of the request for proposal for the related study. I make these requests under Title two point zero four oh three zero of the city code, which I'll be handing to you. That RFP should not go out until the full council and the public have had a chance to carefully consider what it should be in it. And the council has voted in public on the final RFP. That may require adjusting the staff's timeline, but the council needs time to stand up and lead this major policy review. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Come on down.
My name's Jacquel Moore, and I live in Ward Two. While we've got all these Lunch and Learn lovelies, I just also wanted to give a shout out to former council member Jarrett Smith, who did a lot to make that program possible, so thanks for continuing the legacy. I am extremely disappointed, however, to see that the city's still using the X platform. Here's a thought to help those community members who are still using X transition to the city's Blue Sky account. When a post from the city goes up, couch it as a teaser on X and state that for more information, people can go to the city's Blue Sky account. It would be helpful to remind people that Blue Sky accounts are available for free. As was pointed out during the initial announcement about the city's move to Blue Sky, X and its owner do not share the same values this city professes to have. To quote from the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five city announcement, "The decision reflects the city's commitment to using platforms that align with the morals and ethics of the community. It is difficult to find any commonalities between our city and the words and actions of Elon Musk, the troll king of the internet. I find it exceptionally sad that the city has rolled over and acquiesced so soon. We need you to stand by and stand up for what you say you believe in." You already know that I want to get the MPIA request that Mr. Gagliardo, I'd love to get that information in hand, and then get a progress report about the audit. And one last thing, I know that there's a city-sponsored Juneteenth celebration scheduled for tomorrow. Hope the rain holds off for you. But I wanted to put in a plug for the celebration being held at the Anacostia Community Museum on June twenty-first, from ten AM to five PM, rain or shine. ACM does have indoor space for their event should there be rain. The event includes discovering the historical significance of canning and root sellers, learning how to plant now for a fall and winter harvest, getting expert tips on container gardening and winter storage, exploring multi-planting techniques for a bountiful harvest, taking home a root vegetable grow bag and witnessing a fresh pickle-making demo. On their main stage, they've got performances starting at noon that include, with their hosts, BMO Brown and DJ B Sharp. They've got spoken word by teen poet Lemonade Dream, the Joy Carter and Band soulful melodies and live music, and the Black Alley Band. That's the headliner. Their community art and cultural activities include an interactive mural created by local artist Brian Bailey, Double Dutch, always a favorite, local food trucks, and the exhibition A Bold and Beautiful Vision: A Century of Black Arts Education in Washington DC from nineteen hundred to two thousand traces the story of teachers and students who made Washington DC a truly unparalleled center for black arts education. The Anacostia Community Museum, as you probably know, has been under fire by the Trump administration, and there's a very real possibility that this vital resource could close its doors. So let's give them some support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments? Come on down.
I'm Edutradon Azalea here. What I find is when I deliver the mail on Cedar Ave and Maple Ave, both sides have a sidewalk. However, when I'm delivering mail on Wonoc, Wonoc Ave and Houston Ave, the outside, one side, it's only one side does have a sidewalk. I wonder why is that? And what I find is there's a stop sign on Lacon Avenue and Carroll Avenue, right? There's one on Erskine Ave that does have a panel saw here with it. I think at nighttime, when you're driving, that stop sign on Lacon and Carroll Avenue should have a panel saw as well. That's all.
Thank you so much. Do you have any other general public comments?
Hello, I'm Nancy Ilman from Ward One. I'm here tonight to express my sadness, disappointment, and anger at a decision made by someone in this government, which I believe to be a violation of federal law. I'm here representing my inspiring and very talented colleague, Arturo Ho, a fellow Mosaic mural artist, whose moral rights, as described in the Visual Arts Rights Act of nineteen ninety, have, in my opinion, been violated by the city of Tacoma Park. This morning, when I saw the beautiful and much-beloved mosaic mural finally being reinstalled, I went to speak to the crew installing it and learned that in spite of their submission of precise measurements and drawings, they had been instructed to distort, mutilate, and otherwise modify the artwork, removing the entire sky, the upper half of large azalea flowers, entire leaves, and more. Rather than contact Arturo as required under the law, they claimed not to have been able to reach him. So I sent him an email right there on the spot, and this is an excerpt of his immediate reply, which he asked me to share with you this evening. "This is unacceptable. This is not right. I can't see why they would install only part of my art. So much missing. I'm hurt. I'm in shock, not for myself, but for the entire community. This art was a true reflection of what art can do to your soul. It gave everyone a chance to participate. It gave everyone a moment to discover themselves. It gave our community a chance to share our stories. Everyone was embraced. Friendships performed. The approach was common to your part to help create this community art, and we all did. We came together eager and excited to make a wonderful new artwork for all to enjoy. That's what made the experience so special and so memorable. I was tasked to lead the design and facilitate community participation, and my main takeaways, as I recall, were diverse community participation, intergenerational sharing of oral history, three months of community creation onsite together, the creation of an artwork that reminds the viewer of the vibrant community that we are in Tacoma Park with the azalea as the primary theme, and to leave a lasting legacy for the Tacoma Park community. So much time and effort by so many behind-the-scenes was involved to put this together. And those deserving of credit include Alice Sims and Art for the People and all those who envisioned and wrote grants to make it a reality. VARA has specific provisions for artwork incorporated into buildings, and artists of these works have a right to the integrity of their artwork, which protects against intentional or grossly negligent destruction of works of recognized stature, as well as substantial distortion, mutilation, or other modification of such works. Since this has already been done to the particular artwork, I suggest simply that you reach out to this lovely artist and make it right with him." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Hi, good evening. I'm Elizabeth Wallace. I'm a Ward One. Please disclose the criteria the mayor and council have adopted to evaluate outside legal firms to perform an independent audit related to the events giving rise to the litigation known as Cooper versus City of Tacoma Park. Two, please identify the outside legal firms that have or are intended to be evaluated to perform such an audit. Now, one of my colleagues has been saying these same words. I think this is the seventh time has this been said. It's also been said that kind of the same people show up at the mic all the time, and maybe people zone out, and maybe they don't listen. But I was reading this in a little book, a primer, if you will. It says, "It's from Twenty Lessons from the Twentieth Century. Lesson eight, stand out. Someone has to. It is easy to follow along. It can feel strange to do or to say something different, but without that unease, there is no freedom. Remember Rosa Parks? The moment you set an example, the spell of the status quo is broken, and others will follow. We will continue to come here every week to remind you of the Maryland Open Meetings Act." Something else that came to mind, and there were some words that the mayor mentioned regarding Juneteenth and police violence against black bodies. I assume you include the ones in our dispatch room. This is lesson seven. Please be reflective if you must be armed. If you carry a weapon in public service, may God bless you and keep you. But know that the evils of the past involve policemen and soldiers finding themselves one day doing irregular things, like in the dispatch room. Be ready to say no, and again, no. And thank you for everybody who has said no, who is definitely, especially those that were on the police force. Thank you. Oh, by the way, this is from On Tyranny.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Do we have any virtual public comments this evening? Ms. Machuwi?
Thank you, Mayor Circe, and other council members and everyone else listening. Hi, I'm Mary Jane Machuwi, Ward Two. And I guess I've been coming frequently too. But I started Parents with Special Needs Adults ten years ago, and I'm having a hard time getting people to join. It's not easy. It's not the same as if, oh, I have a dance class or I'm giving out food or I'm teaching you algebra because everybody wants to go that, but no one wants to be the parent of a special needs person, okay? So I'm sorry. Plus that, I'm not a very, believe it or not, I'm not a very outgoing person. I'm really shy. And I just wish some people we meet Thursday via Zoom, Thursday, first Thursdays of every month, except for this Thursday in July because of July the fourth. But you can contact us via INFO capital P O S N A at gmail dot com or call me, Mary Jane Machuwi, at two four zero five eight two six one nine nine. Please, I'm very lonesome. It's lonesome being, I've got neurological issues too. I was born with a right brain learning disability, and I cannot visualize three dimensions. So I never fit in either. So if you can't fit in, don't fit in, and you're still a good person like me, you'd like to join us, please, please let me. you'd like to join us, please, please let me know, because I'm lonesome. And I want to make a shout out to the Village of Tacoma Park, especially Tacoma Rides, because I can't, my license was taken away, and probably because of my disabilities. And I'd like to thank them for giving me rides. And Sandy has been great in finding me rides, and I wanted to thank you very, very much. And I spoke with Mr. Clark of the Recreation Department, didn't return my call. We had a discussion, but I don't agree totally with him. I think other things should be done to help people like my son who fall behind the cracks. There's a lot of us that don't, are different. We don't, he, you all want to usually deal with people where you consider the regular disabled person. No, some of us are different. We fall between the tracks. You might see us for five minutes and think we're okay, but we're not. So anyways, I just wanted to thank you, and just want to let you know I had to walk a lot now. And please, there needs to be sidewalks of someplace you can walk on both sides of the street, please.
Thank you, Ms. Machuwi.
Both, thank you. Both sides of the street need to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move on to council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening? Just as a reminder, please hit your, hit your mics. You will get the green light, and I will transfer you over in the order in which you hit mics. Wonderful. Councilmember Hanzak.
Thank you, Mayor. There are so many people to recognize tonight, so I may not get to everybody, but I just want to thank everyone, as always, for coming out. It's always nice to see so many lovely faces with us. But I want to start with the Lunch and Learn. All of you, it's so nice to see your beautiful faces and your red, bright red shirts. And I see, I see a pen with Ms. Jackie Frazier's picture on it, and I had not realized that I am holding a really cool pen up here that I can use every single day, or maybe I won't ever use it, so I can keep it for a special day. I think you know what a special place she holds in my heart. And it's just, it's just magnificent, actually, to see the organization carrying on with so much fortitude and enthusiasm, and we can be sure that Jackie's looking down on us and smiling to see you here tonight and know, know that you're up to the, to the good work. Can't wait to see what you do this summer. And, and to my, my dear postal worker, whose name I'm not sure I can pronounce, actually, can you? Etwan? Okay, Mr. Etwan, who is, who walks around my neighborhood, I just want to say, he's always smiling. I've never seen anybody smile so much. And he came up to me one day and told me that had I ever tried, you know, one of the particular cakes at Montsecunda, and if I hadn't, then I was really missing out, so I promptly went over. Which one was it? The mango, right? Mango cake, mango cake. And that's how we got to know each other. But anyway, we, I just want to share that, that I think it's so valuable to hear from folks such as yourself who walk the streets of our city every day, rain, sleet, snow, or shine. The postal worker is perhaps more stronger than the military. I mean, you guys never, ever fail us. You're not allowed to let one letter fall through the cracks, and they don't. And so I just want to thank you for your service to our city. But I think the reason we chatted about sidewalks is we were talking about how he said there weren't sidewalks on every side of the streets where he frequently has to walk and do work. And he was also talking about what he sees happening on our streets, because if anybody knows what's going on in our city, it is our postal workers. Anyway, so I thank you for coming out tonight and spending your valuable time with us. I know that you had other places to be tonight, especially after a long day of work. And, and I think you are very well heard, and I will talk about some of your recommendations with the staff, so thank you for being with us. And I think I have out of time, but I hope I will see everyone at Juneteenth. And Ms. Elrich from Ward Five, thank you for coming out on rent stabilization, and I'll look forward to seeing your written comments. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hanzak, Councilmember Wasilek.
Good evening. Thanks for all who came out tonight, especially some Ward Six folks, which always makes me happy. And I'm really excited to hear all the good news about Lunch and Learn. I would like to stop by sometime this summer, so please make sure I'm on that list. I might have to bring my kids with me, but, you know, they'll have fun too. I wanted to, I wanted to just highlight one thing in particular. This past weekend, at, at Koma, there was the Pride Makers Market, which I went to with my family and spent a lot of money on awesome things, like these cool earrings that I got as an early birthday present. And it was just a really great event, and it was very cool. So thanks to the organizers on that one. And connected to that, I saw two news stories today that were hard to hear for, for the LGBTQ+ community, that the Supreme Court decided to let Tennessee ban gender-affirming care for minors, which probably means that I think I heard up to 23 other states might then be able to follow suit, as well as that the Trump administration cut funding for the suicide hotline work that they did with the Trevor Project. So anyway, I just wanted to lift those up, because those things made me feel sad and angry today. And if you are also feeling sad and angry, you're not alone. And I'm glad we are in a state like Maryland, where I'm not worried about something like that happening here. But I just wanted to lift that up. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wasilek. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everyone who spoke this evening. Thank you for the pen. And it was very interesting to hear about the ways in which Lunch and Learn is expanding its efforts and making SSL hours available and so forth. It's clearly thinking ahead to the needs of our community. I wanted to thank the Ward One folks who turned out tonight. I look forward to us being able to provide the details that you asked about, Ms. Wallace, with respect to the criteria used for selecting candidates and so forth for the audit. And, and I would just like to say, we did, we continue to make very good progress towards getting that started, and, and that it's a priority for the council, that it be done, and that it be done properly and impartially. I wanted to thank Ms. Elrich for her comments about the rent stabilization report. I've been through the draft scope of work for the RFP and provided a lot of detailed comments, and I think that your point is well taken, that we need to signal clearly what policies we are trying to, what our goals are in order to have the policy evolve in the direction of those goals, and that it is important for the council to be clear with one another about that. So your suggestion was a constructive one, and I thank you for that. I'll just finish by saying that I plan my next coffee with a council member, or tea, or water, take your pick, from 10 to 12 a.m. on July, the, I went, sorry. Got to check the date again here on my calendar. On July 12th, Saturday, July 12th, at Spring Mill Bakery, and I hope to see some Ward One people there to let me know what's on your mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, thank you. So three things real quick. Thanks to the Public Works gardening staff for doing all that invasive work in Tacoma, in Forest Park, and dodging the rain all, all month to get it done. I watched the applicators yesterday, and they did a very targeted and professional job. Second thing, a local pickup event on Saturday at 11 a.m. at the corner of Elm and Auburn, at the Little Library in the Saskia neighborhood. Three local poets are going to read their poetry, and I think that's just really special. So anybody who's walking around on Saturday, 11 o'clock, Auburn and Elm. And last, I think that the city manager mentioned this last week, but a reminder that the City Green Home and Businesses Grants Program has been extended to June 30th, and it's the deal, if you have any work planned. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Just want to check with Councilmember Schlegel to see if you have any comments.
Yes, I would like to make a comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
I'm unfortunately away with family this week, each year, so I'm unable to celebrate Juneteenth with everybody else in town, but I'll be celebrating it outside of town. I hope Ward Three residents will come out big and participating in the festivities tomorrow. Thanks to Jackie Moore for noting former Councilmember Jared Smith's key role in getting Lunch and Learn started and seeing that need. I was shocked and disappointed to hear the mosaic reinstallation has not included the entire piece, as was the commitment, so I hope we'll be responsive to that. I just wanted to use this time to update colleagues and other residents on some of the issues that I'm engaged with in Ward Three, for your awareness. So kind of moving from north to south. At Lincoln Avenue, I've been joining with residents and observing the traffic in the 300 block. I'm hearing about gridlock and a road rage incident there. And so there's certainly interest in any possible short-term traffic improvements prior to the traffic study in that stretch there. At Tacoma Junction Parking Lot, the Director of Housing Community Development, Devin McNally, has shared that the city anticipates beginning to implement changes in late August to the lot with enforcement of new parking rules in September, just letting people know. Continue to monitor the issue of the co-op condenser units, noise, and vibrations, and I've been in touch with residents and staff, and I know that issue's not resolved, and I'm ready to assist. At Victory Tower, there have been longstanding concerns about elevator breakdowns, and we learned this week, the building management has been directed by inspectors to present a plan for remedying this problem. And I'll be at Victory Tower in the second half next week to talk with residents and check in with staff around other concerns expressed earlier this year. Westmoreland Avenue area, residents have been requesting more frequent and more random enforcement of parking restrictions. I appreciate Laura Barclay, able Tacoma Business Association, her assistance in getting the word out that the parking is restricted wherever there are no meters. And thanks to the Police Department for their help with that. At Walnut Avenue Eastern, just letting folks know, the Community Association has been making contact with neighbors across the DC line, and there's renewed hope for progress in getting some form of traffic control at that intersection. In Spring Park, stopped by, admire the sculpture at the spring, which has been refurbished lovingly and expertly by Tacoma Park artists, including Alice Sims, who knew the original sculptor, Norm Green. Very appreciative of folks in Pine Crest, who are very activated around issues of litter and dumping on Sligo Mill Road, and who are seeking a cross-agency approach around the space of the playground being misused by some people. So thanks to all the staff who are helping with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. All right, seeing no additional comments. So I just want to acknowledge all of the folks that have come here tonight to provide feedback. I really appreciate it. To, I believe you are my postal worker as well. Thank you so much for coming out. I know I've spoken to the postmaster on numerous occasions and have heard firsthand that we have some very difficult routes, in large part just because of the hills, the having to walk high up to get to the front doors where the mailboxes are, but also the narrowness of the streets and the need for sidewalks. So thank you so much for bringing some of these matters to our attention. It's important for us to hear it firsthand, because our goal is to make sure, because I mean, people complain a lot if they don't get their mail. And I think my job is to try to make sure that we equip you all to be able to get to it. So thank you so much for spending time out this evening and coming in. I want to thank all of the folks from Lunch and Learn. Sign me up. Just make sure I know ahead of time, so I can make sure that I'm there, because I never want to leave once I interact with the kids. But thank you all so much for, for your continued advocacy and carrying the legacy forward and continuing to commit. I am so excited at the sheer volume of students that you're anticipating this summer. I think that's just a wonderful, wonderful thing. Councilmember, former Councilmember Schultz and that cell phone going off nonstop. I feel like I could say that, because it's Councilmember Schultz. A former Councilmember Schultz. So thank you all so much. I do thank Ms. Elrich for, for coming out and providing feedback. I do just want to make sure that I am reinforcing the fact that the review of the rent stabilization program is something that not just this council, but many councils prior, have voted on in various capacities. It was voted on in 2019 when we voted on the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. It was noted and voted on in council priorities from 2023 to 2024, 2025, and 2026 as part of our priorities to say, hey, we should look at our housing code, including sections on rent stabilization. It was a point that was brought up when prior council was having to deliberate on the MMPA and the vote related to that. And it was also discussed in terms of the funding for this study as part of the budget conversations that were just had. So I want to be clear. As was mentioned earlier, the council has received work sessions, not just on the scope, but a landscape work session on rent stabilization laws more generally. Council has since 2019, and quite frankly, before that, because it took us about a year to get to the point where we had the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, where we deliberated on what the priorities are for the city in order to address some of our housing needs. And we have also had a work session more recently, where staff walked through the plenary scope and had briefings with council, but it's also provided council members with an opportunity to provide comments. And this council will have an opportunity to vote on the final award of the contract. So I just want to make sure that there is not a misconception out there, that this council has not been engaged in any way as it pertains to discussions around a need for a review. And I think it's important for, for everyone to hear that this particular issue or the need for this review has been in discussion amongst multiple councils since 2019. So I look forward to additional conversations regarding the scope. I look forward to the engagement that will happen through this study. But I do want to stress that this is something that has been discussed at length for many years across multiple councils. The next couple of things, and I'm out of time. I do just want to echo my, my thanks again to all of the folks. I was unable to attend on Saturday, but the No Kings protest, I heard. I got lots of pictures from folks that were able to attend, that it went off peacefully, and there were so many people out. And so thank you to all of those who use your, your rights and voices were heard, so thank you for that. I was able to make it out to the Pride Maker Market. I too have earrings that I am looking forward to wearing, so I want to thank the organizers for that. And also had the wonderful opportunity to attend the Tacoma Park Annual Homecoming, and it felt like a family reunion. I had a chance to meet one of the first black police officers in the city of Tacoma Park. I learned about the bottom. I learned about a lot of the things that happened back in the day in Tacoma Park through a number of seniors that some grew up here, have moved out of state, but they all come back together once a year just to talk about the great things that are in Tacoma Park. I will be at the Juneteenth event tomorrow, so I hope to see everyone there. And I will also be at the poetry reading, and yes, I'll be there too. And again, I will be, as many of us will be. Uh, and, uh, again, I will be, uh, as mo- many of us will be for the, uh, Sunday through Wednesday um, at the MML Summer, Summer Conference. Um, I will be participating on a panel during the conference, um, discussing, um, ranked choice voting. So I want to encourage my colleagues to come check me out. Um, along with Laura Barclay is also going to be on the session, so it should be, um, should be really fun times. And so with that, I will turn things over to our City Manager, uh, Mr. Despirito for City Manager comments. I'm sorry, I control your mic still. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council and guests. I want to start out by inviting all residents and guests to, uh, please consider attending the Juneteenth celebration that will occur, uh, tomorrow. This is, uh, going to be located at the, uh, Tacoma Park Middle School. And it's live music, vendors, food, a lot of opportunity to see folks you know and make new friends. And, uh, we, I think last year was the first, uh, event, uh, that we had partnered with Maple, um, the Maple Community Association, Maple Avenue Community Association, and we're very excited to do so again. We have multiple city departments that will be assisting, but a few, uh, specific notes, a few things have changed. Due to the rain, the condition of the fields, uh, it will not be conducted on the fields. It's way too wet. Uh, they're almost underwater, so it'll be in the parking lot instead. Um, the public can park in lots adjacent to the school fields. They can park at the dog park parking lot and I think, and welcome to park at the community center parking lot and also on street. But the, uh, fields unfortunately are in a condition that they just can't be used. Uh, the rain date, if it comes to that, is, uh, Saturday, the twenty-first. This event is from twelve noon to six PM. Again, it's tomorrow, Thursday, June nineteenth, Juneteenth. And, uh, very excited to, um, see the gathering that we had last year and, uh, and build upon that. From the Housing and Community Development Department, the Maryland Board of Public Works approved the city's green space equity program request in the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars for conservation work at Dorothy's Woods to include removal of the impervious services, surfaces, including the deteriorating basketball court, the addition of an ADA compliant curb cut and benches, removal of invasive species and planting of native plants and deer-resistant understory. Work will begin this coming fiscal year. The city's Aging in Place Grant from the Maryland Department of Aging concludes at the end of this month. These funds provided supplies and materials to support the Village of Tacoma Park's Small Home Repair Program. The Village reports that over the one-year grant period, one hundred and thirty repairs and accessibility modifications will have been completed for senior residents of the city. Thank you to the Village and their wonderful volunteers for making this pilot program a great success. From the Police Department, the Tacoma Park Police Department will be having a second Tilemate AirTag giveaway event on Saturday, June twenty-eighth from ten AM to two PM at the corner of Sligo Creek Parkway and Maple Avenue. As part of our ongoing commitment to public safety, they will, uh, these tiles will be distributed, uh, free. These are tracking tags, uh, for residents of Tacoma Park. These devices can be placed in vehicles to assist residents in locating their vehicles in the event of theft. We opted for Tilemate due to its compatibility with both iPhone and Android devices. For more information, please visit the city website and search Tilemate. Email and text, texting scams are on the rise, unfortunately, here in Tacoma Park and across the country. Please take a moment to educate yourself on how to spot and avoid these scams. You can find a lot of information about scams on the Police Department website. Please stay alert, stay informed, and don't click on anything suspicious. You can also visit the Federal Trade Commission's FTC.gov for further guidance. And the Tacoma Park Police Department offices will be closed on Thursday, June nineteenth, tomorrow, in honor of Juneteenth. But please remember that the Police Department is open twenty-four seven for emergency services. From the Public Works Department, I'm very pleased to announce that the city of Tacoma Park has been awarded a state grant of up to ninety-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the Maryland Energy Administration's FY twenty-five Community Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment Grant Program. This funding will support the replacement and upgrade of public EV chargers in the shared community center and library parking lot at seventy-five hundred Maple Avenue. This is the second grant the city has received. The first one in collaboration with Montgomery County through the depart, through the Maryland Department of Transportation. Additionally, the city intends to access rebate funding available through Pepco, made available through the completed EV fleet transition planning through their contractor, ICF. These charger installations advance our city's commitment to sus- to sustainability and equitable access to clean transportation. The new equipment will provide reliable twenty-four seven access to EV charging for residents, library patrons and visitors, including many from our nearby schools and multifamily housing as we near the completion of the new Tacoma Park Library. These improvements will further enhance that site as a vital community resource. Work is expected to begin in the coming months. Due to the Juneteenth holiday, please note that the Thursday trash and recycling collection routes will take place on Friday this week. And the State Highway Administration has scheduled milling and paving of Philadelphia Avenue between Piney Branch Road and Carroll Avenue for this Friday, June twentieth and Monday, June twenty-third. The work hours will be eight AM to five PM. There will be flaggers to control traffic and one lane will be closed at a time. Expect significant delays passing through the work zone for those particular days. And finally, from the City Manager's Office, this week's staff shout-out is from the Police Department. We are proud to recognize the twenty twenty-four award recipients whose dedication, professionalism and service to our community go above and beyond every single day. The Police Department Awards Committee is made up of three officers and two civilians. The officers, the, um, outcome was Corporal Emmanuel Ael- Aelia, Officer of the Year. Corporal Victor Argueta and Private First Class Janelle Lane as Investigators of the Year. And Ms. Demetrius White, Civilian of the Year. Congratulations to all of you and thank you for all that you do. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to our first item. Councilmember Hanzat.
I apologize, point of order. I just was wondering if I could ask the City Manager a question about the, um, the artwork that was mentioned. Is, what would be the follow-up for, um, for the constituent that asked about the artwork? This was the first that I had heard of it and so I'm just curious what the next steps would be. And I think perhaps others in the public might like to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I just heard about it right before the meeting, so staff is going to look into it. I'm not certain the installation is complete. It, I took a quick look out the window. It doesn't look complete to me. But we are following up with, uh, library and public works personnel. I, I don't have any information beyond that at this moment.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Hanzat. Uh, now we're going to move to the Councilmember Landman.
Thank you. One quick question for the City Manager, if I may, for the, um, for the tags. Can people obtain those for bicycles or scooters as well as for motor vehicles if they bring the appropriate paperwork, ownership paperwork and so on?
I'm uncertain of the answer to that. I can, uh, find out and get information back to the council.
Any last many questions for the City Manager? All right. We're going to move on to our first item this evening, which is the Purple Line Connector Grant New Ave Bike Way Project. And with that, I will turn things over to, um, our Planning Manager, Ms. Grisby.
Good evening, Rosalind Grisby, Community Development Manager for the city. We have a presentation for you this evening on the Purple Line Connection Study. This is the work that comes from a grant we were awarded by the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. It's called the Transportation Land Use Technical Assistance Grant. And, um, it was awarded to the city to use for FY twenty-five. So we are, um, at the, at the final presentation for it now. Excuse me, I just wanted to take a minute to give you some context for the pedestrian and bike work that the city does. You saw this slide last week when we were talking about the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project. We have ongoing bike work and pedestrian work in a number of different venues, and we have six grants that we're working on now. Um, and so this is the wrap-up of one of them. The Purple Line Connector Grant is for a concept study to look at ways to improve bike and pedestrian access to the Crossroads Purple Line Station and the Transit Center. It is a conceptual study. The next steps will be to work on, to develop design. You will recall that you approved the submission of an application for design for this project for the Maryland, um, Kim Lamphier Bike Ways Grants in May. Um, we do not have any response on that yet. It will probably be fall before we hear. Um, we also want to remind you that as, that we are also undertaking the traffic study for the New Hampshire Gardens neighborhood. And so, um, as you watch this presentation and look at some of the coming up work, you'll see that this, we will weave this together. And with that, I will turn it over to Anjali Tapia, who's our project lead from RK&amp;K on this.
Thank you. Good evening. All right, my name is Anjali Tapia and I'm a transportation engineer and project manager, um, on this project. And I'm pleased to be here tonight to share our progress on the Purple Line Connection Study, um, which is the last segment of the New Avenue Bike Way Project. Um, you can, so, I don't have a, yeah, I do, okay. Um, so this, uh, project is the final connection of the New Avenue Bike Way and is meant to provide a connection between New Hampshire Avenue and the future Purple Line Station adjacent to the Tacoma Langley Transit Center. Um, what you're seeing on the map, uh, is the kind of full extent of the New Avenue Bike Way. So the yellow line is Section A, which is meant to use the, um, underutilized service lanes on New Hampshire Avenue and transition that to a two-way bike way um, that will connect to, uh, the purple lines, not to be confused with the light rail, um, that show the alignment we're working on. So that will transition from Holton Lane, um, using Hammond Avenue, Kennewick Avenue and Ann Street to connect to that future Purple Line Light Rail Station. Um, just for context, at the bottom of the screen, Section A continues down, continues south on New Hampshire Avenue and eventually provides a connection to the district line. Taking a look at our study area, we're looking at providing this connection, um, using the neighborhood streets to the west of New Hampshire Avenue and south of University Boulevard. Um, really, this is meant to provide bicyclists and pedestrians with an option, um, outside of that New Hampshire Avenue, University Boulevard intersection, which represents a major barrier to connectivity for bicyclists and pedestrians in the area. Um, this neighborhood is currently under, um, a lot of construction impacts from the Purple Line Light Rail Project. And so there are a lot of concerns about, um, neighborhood cut-through traffic, high traffic volumes on these neighborhood streets, high, uh, vehicular speeds and just general unsafe, unsafe driving behavior, um, as a result of some of that construction cut-through, people trying to avoid the construction. Through the existing conditions phase of the project, we did, we did engage the community. Um, it's important to understand that the Crossroads Farmers Mar- Market operates on Ann Street between University Boulevard and Hammond Avenue, um, on a weekly basis between April and November throughout the year. And, um, so we did engage them throughout the, um, existing conditions phase to kind of understand their operations and, um, how they use the street and the, the sidewalk area. In the picture, you can see how they vendor set up on both sides of the sidewalk in that landscape area as well as on both sides of the street, within the street. And, um, during the farmer's market operations, they close off access to and from University Boulevard, um, so that vehicles are not allowed north of Hammond Avenue. We also, uh, had conversations with the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority and the New Hampshire Garden Neighborhood Association. And just in general, we heard feedback about, um, again, concerns that the cut-through traffic would continue post-construction because it's been going on for so long. The people have kind of adapted these behaviors. Um, and then we also heard concerns about, uh, just undesirable behavior in the neighborhood, um, loitering and things like that. So wanting to, if there's anything to be done to address some of those concerns with this project. Through the existing conditions phase, we looked at, um, what it's like for pedestrians currently using a metric we call Level of Comfort. And it uses factors of the physical environment to understand what it's like for pedestrians and how, how comfortable it is. And really this evaluation, um, a key takeaway was just the missing sidewalks on Hammond Avenue. There are no sidewalks currently on either side, so, uh, uh, a significant gap if we're trying to provide this safe connection to the, to the light rail station. We also did the same thing to evaluate existing conditions for bicyclists using a metric called Level of Traffic Stress, which again uses the physical characteristics of the roadway, like how wide is the road? What's the posted speed limit? How comfortable is it for bicyclists of all abilities to be able to share the road? Um, or do they need a separate facility? And so for the most part, the, these, the streets within our study area are fairly comfortable, comfortable for bicyclists and pedestrians, but just, um, some opportunities to address on Hammond Avenue specifically. So with that, taking it street by street, um, Ann Street to begin with, like I said, is a fairly comfortable for bicyclists and pedestrians. There's existing sidewalks, on-street parking on both sides and, and low traffic speeds. Um, and with the farmer's market, we knew we didn't want to, uh, propose design that would disrupt those operations. So the proposal here is to add shared lane markings so that bicyclists can share the lane with vehicles. And then, um, south of Hammond Avenue to widen the sidewalk to be a ten-foot, um, side path to just increase that space available for pedestrians. Um, north of Hammond Avenue, we didn't want to widen the sidewalk because it seems like there's a, just the right amount of space on either side of the sidewalk to fit a vendor on each side with the farmer's market. So widening the sidewalk could disrupt that operation. Um, and then there were, there were talks of, um, the option to close access to and from University Boulevard on a more permanent basis. And that would, uh, kind of free up some public space for more frequent use and programming from the city. So, um, we did want to look at concepts of, of that option. So what you're looking at here is the first concept for Ann Street, specifically between University Boulevard on the left side of the image and Hammond Avenue on the right side of the image. Um, and this would be maintaining access to and from University Boulevard. Um, you, it's important to note that the, this shows the back of the sidewalk would stay the same as it is in current conditions. So the space between the back of the sidewalk and the right-of-way line, or there, there's a wall there currently, um, would stay the same. Um, just looking for opportunities for additional tree plantings if we can. Um, and like I said, widen the, the sidewalk south of Hammond Avenue for a ten-foot path. In consideration for closing access to and from University Boulevard, we would, um, close off access on the left side of the screen to university with some, uh, landscape plantings or taking an opportunity for a paved area, maybe even creating a stage that could be programmed more frequently by the city. Um, that could accompany the farmer's market or just even outside of the farmer's market offer opportunities. Um, looking for increased opportunities for additional tree plantings and landscaping on either side of the street. Um, moving to the right in the image, uh, the, you can see the the, you can see the bollards at that intersection with Hammond Avenue where we would close access from, we would close access to Ann Street north of Hammond Avenue as well. And you might notice that there are two driveways in the middle there. And it's important to understand that those property owners do have additional driveway access on other streets. So this isn't their sole access point. And it is what they currently experience and are, and they work in collaboration with the Farmers Market. Every week that the Farmers Market's in operation, they don't have access during that time. It could also be worth considering for the city to actually raise the street to curb level. And that might have some maintenance benefits and could even just add more opportunities to make the whole street programmable at that point. Moving on to Kennewick Avenue, where again, we have a high level of comfort for bicyclists and pedestrians and some existing traffic calming already on the street. So we're proposing to add shared lane markings so bicyclists can share the lane, pedestrians can use the existing sidewalk, which is high-quality. And then we're proposing a new high-visibility crosswalk at the intersection with Ann Street. We did hear that there's a school bus stop further west on Ann Street. So this just provides that connection between the sidewalks and that increased visibility for pedestrians. There is a small section of Kirkland Avenue that connects to Kennewick. And again, very comfortable street, but, and there is an existing Capital Bike Share Station. So we just wanted to take the opportunity to provide that connection for bicyclists and pedestrians there as well. There's existing sidewalk. And we're proposing to add shared lane markings so bicyclists can share the lane with vehicles. And that would connect to the northern end of Hammond Avenue. So Hammond Avenue runs north-south and has some interesting characteristics to it. There's, as I mentioned, there's currently no sidewalks. There's on-street parking on both sides of the street, and it's mostly residential. It's bisected by Jackson Avenue. And north of Jackson Avenue, Hammond Avenue is one-way northbound. And south of Jackson Avenue, Hammond Avenue becomes two-way in its operations. It's also important to understand that on one side, on the east side of Hammond, there is a pretty wide existing right-of-way where there's a lot of trees and brush that's kind of overgrown. It's on the backside of an office building. So it's not, it doesn't have great visibility and tends to have, we heard some concerns from the community about just security and visibility and undesirable behavior again. In general, Hammond Avenue has low speeds, but we do want to provide those separate facilities for pedestrians and bicyclists. We explored a number of options here for bicycle facility. And that includes what you're seeing on the right-hand side, some cross-sections on the top is a contra-flow bike lane that we were exploring north of Jackson so that any bicyclist traveling southbound or opposite vehicular traffic would have that physical separation. And then, south of Jackson, looking at one-way bike lanes that would easily transition with the contra-flow lane. Metrics we were using in our design approach included minimizing utility impacts, minimizing right-of-way impacts, and minimizing impacts to on-street parking. So in both of these scenarios, both of these options were ultimately dismissed just based on their significant impacts to on-street parking. On Hammond Avenue, what we're proposing is to add a new five-foot sidewalk on the east side of the street where we have considerable right-of-way available, at least north of Jackson, and sufficient right-of-way available south of Jackson. The proposal is to remove on-street parking on the east side for the full length of Hammond Avenue and add a two-way separated bike way in its place. The intersection of Hammond Avenue and Jackson Avenue, as I mentioned, Jackson kind of bisects the street. And this one in particular is very, very wide. And we heard concerns about high-vehicle speeds and just unpredictable behavior. Oftentimes, cars driving the wrong way down Hammond Avenue, whether out of confusion or on purpose, it was undetermined. And the, just the design of the intersection really kind of induces high speeds and unsafe behavior. So in our proposal, we are suggesting to implement some traffic calming and tighten the intersection using paint and raised flex posts, both on the northwest corner and the southwest corner. And this would effectively reduce the width of Jackson Avenue by half. Same thing on Hammond Avenue, reduce the width by half to try to just visibly reduce the width of the road and reduce speeds. This also provides the opportunity to use some of that available right-of-way on the east side where you see that number eight. And we saw this as an opportunity for a pocket park. Is there a way to kind of activate and improve the space that would increase the activity and kind of eyes on the street to address some of the, by making the space more inviting and increasing the activity, kind of addressing some of those concerns about safety and undesirable behavior? So we looked at three options for that pocket park on the east side of Hammond. This is the first, which maintains continuous alignment the entire length. And so you can see the sidewalk in dark gray in between the linear pocket park and the two-way separated bike way. In this option, the width of Hammond, this singular travel lane, still stays pretty wide, but it has the benefit of kind of a continuous alignment for bicyclists and pedestrians while still having increased landscape and even some passive amenity space, room for benches and seating that way. The second option is what we're calling a full shift of the bike way. So taking the opportunity to narrow Hammond even further in that single travel lane northbound and shifting the bike way out into the street, shifting the curb out into the street, and gaining space for the pocket park on the other side. This, so you can see increased space for landscaping and plaza area in the image. And one thing to note is that this concept would then impact some parking on the west side of the street. The last option is a half-shift of the bike way. So we're still narrowing Hammond Avenue slightly. We are gaining some space for the pocket park compared to existing conditions. And you can see this option just shows it with more, heavier on the plaza and lighter on the landscaping. That's, but, you know, subsequent design phases could hash that out further. And so while narrowing the lane and widening the park, this option does not have that same impact to parking on the west side. So just summarizing a comparison of the three options for Hammond. Concept one has the lowest impact to parking on the west side of the street, but the least amount of space available for the pocket park. Concept two has the greatest amount of space available for the pocket park and also the greatest impact to parking on the west side. And then, concept three has a slightly higher, you know, almost equal to concept one in terms of its impact to parking. And you're getting almost the same amount of pocket park area as concept two. Depending on the combination of options, we're estimating total project costs could range anywhere from $500,000 to $800,000. And ultimately, the project is achieving significant goals, which include providing that safe connection to the future Purple Line Light Rail Station, filling that existing sidewalk gap on Hammond Avenue, while minimizing disruption to the Farmers Market, minimizing impacts to utilities, right-of-way, trees, and minimizing impacts to on-street parking. And lastly, really leveraging opportunities for traffic calming improvements. So really packing it all in, in this small section. With that, I'm happy to take questions and thank you.
... with bike lanes that may be developed along University Boulevard as it relates to the Purple Line. Because it's, I haven't looked at it in some time, but I know that one of the goals with the bike lanes on University Boulevard is to bridge that connectivity, basically a pathway to the University of Maryland to allow folks to bike down university, onto the University of Maryland campus. Was that something that was taken into consideration? Because I could see how Ann Street could help, not just someone getting to the actual stop, but someone actually being able to take that full length along university.
Yes, so with the Purple Line, there are one-way bike lanes planned. So bike lane on either side of University Boulevard to connect to. So bicyclists from Ann Street could easily, sorry, I guess this would be eastbound on University Boulevard. And then, just, just over here is the signalized, a signalized crossing that will happen. And so bicyclists would need to use that to transition to go westbound onto University Boulevard.
Okay. And I guess that kind of goes to a larger question. If this were to come into existence, then that signalized crossing, you're right. You would basically have to cross, which is the pain that everyone has with the light at Ann Street. Because once you turn on Ann Street, you're right under a light.
It's kind of an offset intersection. And with the shopping center driveways as well. But I can say, so yes, you will have to wait for the lights. But I will, the Purple Line plans show increased, like, high-visibility crosswalks. It's gonna, you know, almost the whole, even on either side of Ann Street, basically is kind of all hashed as a crosswalk. Yeah.
And so then that would still allow, it might not be the smoothest transition, but it would allow for that type of transition. And one other question, and this may be for Ms. Grisby. I thought, and I don't trust my memory at this time, but part of the traffic studies that we're undertaking in the New Hampshire Gardens neighborhood, I thought one of them was related to whether or not Hammond should be a one-way or not. Am I making that up? It is right now, but they're talking about, the debate is whether or not it should be a one-way.
I believe that the question is the other end of Hammond. It's where Hammond intersects with, beyond that. Is it Glen Side? Sorry, I don't have the full map in front of me.
Yeah.
In a roundabout.
Okay, so it's at the circle. That little piece at the circle, which is basically near the, either Holton. I think there's a circle there and right near Kirkland. Yeah.
It's the other end, it's the other end of Hammond. It's not the section of Hammond that this study's, it's Lockney.
Lockney, okay, thank you. Okay, so I was just trying to make sure that I understood which section of Hammond we're working on with the traffic study to try to identify whether or not there needs to be a one-way. Because in looking at the possible addition of the bike lanes, I was just wondering whether or not there is enough width at that section of Hammond to be two-way traffic plus the bike lanes. Are we going to be proposing to, plus parking? Are we going to be proposing to make that one-way too?
So this intersection at Hammond and Kennewick now, that block of Hammond from Jackson to Kennewick, or it's to Kirkland, I guess, is one-way. And so this study did not consider making that two-way. Is that your question?
That's my question.
Yeah. We did not look at that.
Okay, okay. So basically, it would be this section is already one-way and you're basically trying to use some of the width to create the bike lanes, create the bump outs, and then that way it would continue to be a one-way. Thank you. Sorry, we've been talking-
And sidewalks.
And sidewalks, okay. We've, sorry, we've been doing a lot of talking about this particular neighborhood and I'm just trying to make sure I'm keeping all of the projects straight. Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Westle. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember DeBala, you were first.
Oh, thank you. That was one of my questions about the traffic study. But just a couple of quick questions that are maybe broader questions. See, you give a cost for the total project. In the report, does it break it down by piece of project? So for example, if the city wanted to go ahead with sidewalks or go ahead with the pocket park because funding is available or whatever, we would know about how much that is?
We can provide that level of detail, sure. Right now, we have it presented as just combination of options, but still rolled up as a total project cost. But if the city's interested in that break, that more detailed breakdown, we can certainly provide that as an appendix.
Well, for me, those seem like the two obvious ones that could be broken up and potentially funding be found for. Did I understand you to say that there is a report and is it going to be posted? That might be a Ross question. Okay, and two more. Who owns the land where the pocket park's supposed to be? Some of it's right-of-way and some of it's something else?
This property is the backside of the three-story office building at 7676 New Hampshire. And so the right-of-way line is-
It's pretty big.
It's pretty big, yeah.
Yeah.
So the city owns, I think, most if not all of what we've talked about.
Well, that's my question, who owns the rest? And how would we get it amongst the three options? Because they go different depths. Don't have to answer that now, but that's just something that it would be nice to have in the report.
Yes, so they, the three options have different depths. But they do that by going into the street. So they maintain the same back, they maintain the right-of-way line.
Okay, great, thank you, didn't realize that. And last, but certainly not least, you talked a little bit about the stakeholder engagement for this part. And then, remind me again what the next step is and what the public, the stakeholder engagement is in the next part. Because this is a big leap from concept to 65% design, so.
Definitely, so when we get funding for the next step, we would do as we have done with other projects, which is at that, at this stage, do a lot of very deliberate and intentional public input. The earlier we get public input in the design process, the smoother it goes. Coming in late with changes in a design is a very expensive process. So 30% is our ideal time when people have something to respond to and they have some visuals to help them understand what the ideas are. And then can give us their lived experience and their perspectives on what works and what doesn't work.
And we've already got the grant in, so we'll see what happens.
We have submitted it.
Yeah, okay.
I'll just, I'll just add that, I didn't mention this, but we did have a community meeting as part of the public engagement. So we did host that where we were able to show the three concepts on Hammond and the two concepts at Ann Street. And I expect there would be a similar meeting included with the 65%.
Yeah, might need to be a little more than that.
Thank you. Councilmember Westle.
Thank you, thank you so much for this. And I'm glad my colleagues are seeing it. I saw a lot of this at that public meeting. And I have a couple of questions. Some, forgive me as a New York council member. Saying the 30% and 65%, is this 30%?
This is 10%.
This is 10%? Because I heard a jump to, when we get to 65%. Cause I heard a jump to when we get to sixty-five percent, but there's another, there's another step in between.
I would consider this sort of a proof of concept.
Okay.
What what's possible with the ideas and the hopes that we have? What we're trying to accomplish and what that looks like.
Okay, so after we had funding, we would go back with a thirty percent and get feedback?
I think when we get funding, we would start then with public engagement.
Okay.
I mean, we would start where we leave off here.
Okay, and I have a couple of other questions. The, I'm looking at, gosh, I guess like the last slide, the project summary. It says to fill existing sidewalk gap on Hammond Avenue. Could you just better explain that? Cause I'm having a hard time seeing what that refers to.
Sure. Right now, there are no sidewalks on either side of Hammond. So this proposes to add a new sidewalk on the east side of the street.
Okay.
Um, and that is really the priority to fill that gap and provide that final connectivity.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, and my last question is, and it kind of relates to what Mayor Searsy was asking about with connecting to university. The purple line station is going to be in the middle of University Boulevard. So for any bikes that are then coming north on Ann here, they're going to have to wait for the light to then get their bike from Ann Street to the station. Like, do you have a sense of that? I'm having a hard time with my brain around it.
There are, there will be, well, I guess the best thing for them to do to get to the light rail station is to ride or walk their bike. As I said, there will be a one-way bike lane here. So they could ride their bike and there will be a signalized crossing here to access the light rail station.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the middle of the road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councilmember, councilmember Hansak.
Thank you, thank you so much. This is really interesting. I did have a chance to talk to Director McNally a little bit and Ms. Grigsby about this. So I just have a couple of questions. I guess my first one is a little bit related to what Councilmember Weslik was asking. I'm imagining, you know, you've already got the Tacoma Langley Transit Center with bus, bus station access and then we'd have the purple line station also there in the middle of the road. So what makes us think that folks who want to go south on New Hampshire towards the city are gonna first want to go west before they go east? And that, as a biker myself, I know there's a tendency to want to take the most direct route. So if these lines are not easy to cross already and you're going to have to cross a signal, I would imagine a lot of folks might, and I'm just curious what what theory you have that this is, people are going to really want to follow those bike route the opposite direction from what I'm trying to go. What, how do you see that?
Yes, the intersection of New Hampshire Avenue and University Boulevard is probably only for the most confident bicyclists at this point. So I think that you're right, the most confident bicyclist would take the most direct route and they're welcome to do so. The facility, you know, they'll be able to do that. But the goal was to provide an option, like another option, an alternative to navigating that intersection to kind of try to suit the needs of more, to gather more of the population of bicyclists who aren't as confident. And so I think that with some wayfinding to kind of strategically direct people so that they're aware of the connection, people might do that. People, so I think that that would be welcome as well.
Okay, I just appreciate you answering that question cause I know, I know in my dream world, there would be some sort of bridge or tunnel or something, right? That would allow people to, you know, streamline that process and then it would be very apparent that it was going to be a lot safer and it was worth going west before you go south. But I, I know that's not an easy thing to accomplish. I just wanted to ask that tough question. So then the second thing is you talked about folks in the neighborhood being concerned about loitering. And you've said that on Hammond, there currently are not any sidewalks. We would be proposing to put in both a sidewalk and a pocket park. I had a brief conversation, I think maybe more with Director McNally after you jumped off Ms. Grigsby. But I, I was just wondering, it seems to me, and I guess since we're at ten percent, I'm just going to let, throw this out there, that, that, you know, since this is behind a parking lot, back behind university, if the, if these issues are already happening, I'm not clear on exactly where they're happening. But if we put sidewalks, that might help. If we stick a pocket park that's too hidden, I'm not sure that's really going to help the problem. I would, I would actually imagine it's a really great place to get away from the heat and the traffic and get some cooling, which is not a bad thing, but it could actually become difficult. So I, I would just, I'm just like, I'm more gonna, you can say anything you want to, but this is more of a statement than a question. I really like the, the design that has a little bit more hardscaping on it with shade. Because I think from what I'm seeing over at like Piney Branch and Flower, where we have also a lot of loitering, I think that would allow folks to keep it, you know, just to be more outward facing lengthwise and also just to give people proper shade that they're going to need in that area. If you have any thoughts on that, feel free to comment, but.
Yeah, I heard a key word from you, which was hidden. I think the goal is for it to be visible. And right now, it's very overgrown and with a lot of brush and things like that, that that contributes to it being hidden. And so I think the goal is to not just activate the space in the pocket park, but with the sidewalk, the entire length and cleaning up the landscaping and and making it just a more attractive space by increasing the eyes on it so that it won't be so hidden.
If if I may, just one more thought. I know that when I have heard the term pocket park, and maybe I'm just not that well-informed, I've often heard about optimizing biodiversity goals and really packing a lot of pollinators and native plants into that space. And perhaps the term is used for other purposes as well. But I think given the nature of our particular community where that is very valued, I don't know if we might want to choose a different word for this particular park depending on what the goals of the park are. So just, just throwing that out there because I think it, it really might serve a different kind of purpose than what I just described. So and and maybe I'm the one that's misinformed on that, that terminology. Thank you.
I just want to echo Councilmember Hansak's point. We've, we've tried to do these types of pocket parks. There was one that was along New Hampshire Avenue. We actually had to remove some of the, the benches and things that are there just because it, it created a bit of a nuisance where people were, were doing some unsavory things, being kind of hidden and using the brush as a way to kind of hide. So I do agree with Councilmember Hansak and especially given I live in the neighborhood, I, I know it very well. And you can often find people who may choose to hide a mattress in a pocket park area and they're living there now. So, you know, of course, we're making sure that we're doing our due diligence to connect people to services. But I think if we know that we have those kinds of issues in the community, we shouldn't install spaces that exacerbate that or kind of create more of those problems, but instead focus on ways to activate space in a way that can beautify the neighborhood, but also help to increase safety and ensure that if we're going to put some things there, let us, let's at least make sure that they can be served as a way to help those individuals that that may need someplace to sit and openness. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, I just have one quick question. Looking at the proposal for having Ann, Ann Street be closed at one end. Is there, have you consulted with the emergency, you know, fire and EMT emergency folks to make sure that there are not issues of access to to that street that would be problematic with, with having it closed there? Especially because, you know, people are grilling stuff during the farmer's market and everything. There are, there is like sometimes live flames and stuff like that. I just wanted to double check on that.
We haven't, I don't think we've had conversations with the emergency personnel, we, only with Public Works. But I will say that when it, you know, closing off Ann Street on the south side at that Hammond end, there's a number of options the city could explore. You know, some of those ballards could be movable or some go down to the street or. So there are, there are a number of things that could be explored to, to work around that. Even if it, the street were raised to, to the curb level, it's still kind of sloped to allow, you know, a slower vehicle to, to drive up on it in an emergency. So there are things that can be worked around. Yes, thank you.
I have a question, if possible.
Councilmember Schlegel, I will get to you after Councilmember Gilbert. And I, I just will say that one point around access. I know that currently for the farmer's market, access is provided either through the community, but also the access road that is on University Boulevard, which is where a lot of vendors and the like typically pull up along the, the access road that's right at that end of Ann. So I do just want to make sure that, you know, as we're thinking through logistically how to access there, there's also the access road that's on university that abuts to Ann Street. Councilmember Gilbert.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and sorry if I missed this. But when you talk about the stress and comfort levels of the pedestrians and the cyclists, was there a survey done and can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, so in our, our existing conditions phase, we collected data around just what, what are the existing physical attributes of the roadway? So pedestrian level of comfort wants asks, is there a sidewalk there currently? Does the sidewalk have a landscape buffer in between the sidewalk and the roadway? Is there on-street parking that provides an additional buffer between pedestrians and the vehicles in the travel lane? What is the posted speed limit of the roadway? All of those things that might, as you're walking down the street, what makes the difference between you saying, I'm having, having a pleasant day? And man, it's really noisy, you know? And similar to the bicycle level of traffic stress, but it might just, it might say, are bicyclists sharing the road or do they have a separated facility? Is there like a physical barrier between them and the vehicles? That kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert, Councilmember Schlegel.
Thank you, thank you for this presentation. Spent a lot of time in the area and it's great to see how you're trying to make the most of, of, of the opportunities that are there. And I was, just for the whole council's thoughts for the future, in terms of having a direct access point, as Councilmember Hansak said, it would be great if, if there is going to be redevelopment on that BF Saul site, the big site, that if there was a way that could get Hammond, a pedestrian and bike only sort of continuation of Hammond to move north and go straight to the purple line crosswalk, that would be really nice to keep that area open. More specifically to this design, I was interested in slide eighteen, if you could pull that up. Cause a number, a number of us have been asking about that stretch of Hammond. And I just had two questions regarding the, the two-block section of Hammond between Kirkland and Holton. My first question is, have you considered how cyclists will make the transition from having both, both the north and southbound cyclists on one side of the street and then having to have one of those flows shift to the other side of the street? In the, in the southern block?
Yes, to Holton, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes, so I, we are proposing a, a high-visibility crosswalk on that, across Holton Lane. That would be the east leg of the intersection of Holton and Hammond. It could even be a raised crosswalk because it's kind of at the bottom of that. Holton slopes down as it's going toward, between New Hampshire Avenue to Hammond Avenue. So could even be raised to provide some, a traffic calming benefit as well. But yes, the idea is that from the east side of Hammond, bicyclists would use that crosswalk to either transition up the hill, on Holton Lane to connect to the service lanes or the upcoming bikeway on New Hampshire Avenue.
Thank you. And the, I'm sure we would see more of that as the, as the percentage of designs move forward. The other thing was about the pocket park area there at the T intersection with Jackson. And I certainly don't want to speak for any residents in the neighborhood. And I, I really hear what, what Mayor Searsy and others are saying about the, the concerns about loitering. We're, we're seeing that at our tot lot in Pinecrest at the same time. I did, I did, if it's possible for you to pull up slide eighteen, it's just that in looking at that, it, it occurs to me that if you have, if you have both those blocks made into a one-way condition, you could, you could push out any kind of public space amenity farther into the intersection. In essence, if, if you think of it, cars going east on Jackson would have to turn right onto Hammond and cars coming south on Hammond would have to turn right onto Jackson. In essence, that would mean that, that really wide intersection, rather than installing those bump outs on the west side, as you show in this diagram, you could use more of the space on the east side. And maybe if it was more of a, a simple active play space for kids without seating, so to speak, without extensive seating, it could be an amenity for kids in the neighborhood and not encourage long-term loitering. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I, here's what I heard. You're, you're talking about extending the east, instead of the paint and raised flex posts on the west side of Hammond, where we, at Jackson, kind of letting that be and bringing the, shifting the travel lane west even further?
Yeah, and just having one travel lane heading onto each section of Hammond because you could make each section one-way. It's just an idea.
Oh, make each. It's not, it's, I can see where the idea is coming from, but I think we were looking, I think we looked at kind of the grid network that exists in the neighborhood and thought it would be difficult. It would, it would really limit access by making that southern section one-way as well. But I see you're saying make it one-way southbound.
Yes, and I'll defer to Councilmember Weslik and Mayor Searsy who live much closer to the area, but I just wanted to put that idea out there.
Yeah, I, I think that, and I know we've gone over on this conversation. I think that given the magnitude of the volume of traffic that's in this neighborhood and given the number of traffic studies that are, have yet to be complete, I'm hesitant to automatically commit one section or another to a one-way. I say all the time, traffic is like water. It will take the la, the path of least resistance. And knowing that we have such a volume issue in this community, I think it's important that this is great and we're having conversations, but this is at ten percent. By the time we're at thirty-five percent, we hopefully will have the results from the various traffic studies. We looked at some of the traffic calmin's. We can incorporate some, some of these issues into some of the longer-term planning for this community, which will not only be impacted by bikers needing to navigate to the purple line, but will also be plagued with people who want to park in the community because they want to ride the purple line and there's nowhere to park or they want to drive through the community because they want to avoid University Boulevard and that New Hampshire Avenue intersection that we all know is a pain. So I, I think that for, for this project, it's great, given where we are. I just think that there is a lot of other studies that are yet to go, yet to come that can definitely also help to address some of the, the major issues that are plaguing this neighborhood. But I think that this is, this is something great in terms of, you know, food for thought as we're kind of having some of these broader conversations around traffic calming, pedestrian safety, cyclist safety and navigating the new world that will be a. that will be a purple line station that we might actually see in our lifetime. So thank you so much for, for coming out tonight. This has been a great presentation and we really appreciate it. And definitely look forward to continuing to flush out the design work on this important work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, um, we're going to move into our voting session. So I'm going to do things a little different instead of turning everyone's mics on because I am hearing a lot of feedback. Um, I am going to turn things over to you. You can hit your button. Once you're, you hit your button, um, your mic will be on. If you hit your button that second time, your, your mic will be off. Folks want to just give it a test, um, because we're going to have to do, perfect. We're going to have to do roll call, um, for these votes. Uh, so the first item is the second reading ordinance approving FY26 budget amendment number four. Um, would someone like to move it?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Just want to check with our city manager to see whether or not there are any points of discussion. Okay, seeing none.
Sorry, I have one. Uh, once again, it's saying FY26, but we're referring to FY25. So, um,
Thank you very much.
I'm trying to, I don't see the full, uh, anyway, yeah.
Thank you. All right. FY26. I mean, I keep saying FY26. FY25. All right. That is what it should say. Um, so second reading ordinance approving FY25 budget amendment number four. Um, Councilmember Hansak moved, Councilmember Gilbert seconded. Um, no points of discussion. Uh, with the clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak?
Aye.
Councilmember Westle?
Aye.
Mayor Searcy?
Aye.
Next item is a single reading ordinance approving community quality of life grant recommendations. Would someone like to move it?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Westle. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think Council,
Dibala can have it.
Uh, Councilmember Dibala. Um, are there any points of discussion from staff? Okay, seeing none. Any points of discussion from council? Okay, seeing none. With the clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Westle?
Yes.
Mayor Searcy?
Aye.
Next, we have the single reading ordinance awarding a grant for the summer lunch and learn services. And, um, there was a typo. Just want to check with staff to confirm that that adjustment has been made. Um, and it should be in, um, the section one. Whereas it should now read, um, the city manager is authorized to execute a contract with, um, Lunch and Learn for disbursement of up to $45,000 for the 2026 Lunch and Learn Summer Camp. I just want to confirm with staff that that adjustment has been made. Thank you very much.
Uh, point of information. Um, the description on the green page refers to a virtual summer meals and enrichment program. And I wanted to know what that, whether that's a typo. It's not virtual. They're, they're in person, right?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
It's hard to feed people virtually as far as I know.
Once those edits are made, I would like to move.
Okay, so yes, it should be, uh, it is no longer virtual. This is reminiscent of, of what happened in the past. Um, and the resolution, um, should refer to Lunch and Learn and not cheer. Okay, um, just want to, okay. Um, seeing no more, just want to confirm with staff that there are no more adjustments that are needed to this resolution. Okay, um, to this ordinance, I apologize. Okay, so with that, uh, single reading ordinance, uh, awarding a summer grant for summer lunch, uh, awarding a grant for summer lunch and learn services. Um, would someone like to amend it? I should say, would someone like to move it?
Yes.
Councilmember Hansak?
Move. Councilmember Dibala seconded. Um, with the clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak?
Aye.
Councilmember Westle?
Aye.
Mayor Searcy?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to move to our next work sessions for the evening. The first item is the contract for library solar panels.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I am thrilled to bring this before you this evening. Um, lots of good news in the world of grants and solar power. And the city's been, uh, uh, really benefiting from the, um, wonders of our grant person, Patty Mallon, and our public work staff that were working on this, Ian Chamberlain and Doria Estrada, our, um, sustainability manager. So what we have before you tonight is, as you may recall, last year in the fall, the city applied for and received a smart energy communities grant from the Maryland Energy Administration for $125,000 specifically to install solar on top of the library. Um, and we had to wait until construction was complete in order to facilitate that, um, system. What we, um, proposed in the grant and what we, uh, continue to envision is a city-owned solar panel system, uh, where the city would own the panels. The power would be generated and the city could choose to, uh, earn renewable energy credits for the power that was generated through those panels. Um, so that's the vision for the future, just to step back and sort of say, we had panels before, what's all with that? Um, the city in 2012 embarked on a solar panel, uh, installation project through something called a power purchase agreement. So it is a different vehicle. It's a way to get at no cost, solar panels installed on your roof. The agreement is that you buy the power that is, that's generated by those panels. So the, uh, third party, uh, gets the renewable energy credits. They get whatever grants or other incentives are available, tax incentives and whatnot. Uh, and then they can also generate revenue from the solar power that they sell. Uh, the benefit of a per, uh, jurisdiction like ours, it isn't, enables solar panels get installed at no outlay of cost. So the solar panels get there and from day one, they're generating electricity. Um, also typically in those arrangements, the cost for the power is less than the utilities cost. So we have a 20-year agreement, um, with our solar panel, uh, provider. Um, and, uh, we have a contract that identifies what the cents per kilowatt is at each year. Uh, and it has an annual escalator of 0.035%. And so we continue on, um, so just by way of kind of capacity wise, about, um, the solar panels that are installed on this building and prior, previously the library before it was demolished, uh, equaled about 100 kilowatts of, uh, kilowatt hours of solar panel, uh, uh, solar power annually. Uh, the system that we're looking at for the library is about 98, uh, kilowatt hours. So just about doubling the current, uh, capacity for solar power generation. Now, as you might recall, when the library was demolished, those panels that were on the library had to get removed. So the building could get demolished. Some of those were able to be reinstalled and other parts of the roof that weren't currently under solar panels. Others are literally stored stacked up on the roof, waiting to be reinstalled. So that all's going to happen. Um, the existing, uh, power purchase agreement partner, the person who owns those panels, um, is the, the city has a, a contract with him first to remove, set up and store. Uh, there will also be, uh, contract for him to reinstall those, uh, solar panels. So all that existing 100 KW of solar panels that were installed in 2012 will be reinstalled, though in slightly different configuration. Uh, those are not city-owned. Those are PPAs. We're under contract to buy the power from those panels. Um, and in addition to that, this is looking at the new, uh, new installation. So, uh, almost 100 KW of new solar panels that will be city-owned, that will be on the library. So I hope I haven't made anybody more confused by this, but I know, because we have had a lot of moving parts, um, it's been kind of complicated. Uh, we partnered with the Maryland Clean Energy Center, um, at, through this process. The, you know, request for a per, uh, proposal for things like solar power is, is fairly technical. And you want to make sure that the vendors that are responding, uh, are competent, capable and able to do what they say they're going to do. And so MCEC, uh, assisted us in putting out the RFP, uh, with the city's general conditions and all other requirements, NFC, living wage, you know, the whole package, uh, blended together. Uh, and they oversaw the bid opening and reviewed, uh, the responses that we got. Uh, we got four responses, um, from, uh, from vendors. Uh, they, the vendor that we're proposing to or the contract to is called Green Brilliance. They were the lowest bid. Uh, but in addition to that, their, um, bid proposal showed, uh, very, uh, experienced staff, a lot of similar experience, uh, in the solar field, not only with panel installation, but also working with local governments. That can be kind of a unique thing, uh, for some vendors if they're used to working with corporations. Um, so they have a vast depth of experience, um, a very good team that they've assembled to, to do the work and, and very, uh, similar experience. So we feel, uh, pretty confident that what they've proposed, uh, will be a system that, um, will work well. Um, there is funding in the FY25 budget. You may recall a budget amendment. We did a budget amendment to identify that $125,000, uh, from the Smart Energy Communities Grant. It was added to FY25's budget as a budget amendment. Obviously, we're not going to be able to spend it in FY25, so you will see it again in, uh, the first budget amendment in FY26, um, coming up in July. So we'll move those monies, request to move those monies to FY26 when the, um, expenditure will actually take place. Uh, we feel particularly, uh, pleased that the price that, uh, the low bidder offered was in keeping with the grant amount. Um, there was an assumption that the city may have to put in some funds, uh, to fill the gap. Uh, but, um, this current, uh, proposal, um, does not require that. Uh, so it looks as if it'll be entirely grant funded. Uh, just one more bit of information in the, uh, environmental impact, uh, information that I initially put out. We were trying to track down, um, information about how much electricity the library is projected to require. Uh, as it's not in service yet, it's not open, it's not fully functional. So all this is done by building engineers that calculate these things. So, um, we didn't get all our, our numbers in. Um, and I had, uh, suggested that the amount of, uh, power that was going to be generated by the solar panels was going to be just a little over 50% of the energy the building used. It actually is going to be 71%, projected to be 71%, so even more than the 50%. Um, so a good portion, uh, uh, that the, uh, building engineers assume that the building will use about 138,000 kilowatt hours of electricity annually. Um, and just of note, this is a LEED gold, going to be a LEED. Our, our goal is to be a LEED gold building. So right off the bat, the efficiency of the building is about, uh, 37% more than a normal new building of similar size, similar type, similar use. Um, so it's already made more efficient by windows and various other improvements in the building itself as a requirement through LEED. So you have to make a super efficient building. So we've gone from, um, a typical building of 220 kilowatt hours of electricity a year down to 138. And now we know that about 98,000 of that will be generated through solar power. So very pleased with, um, uh, the energy footprint that this building will, will reflect, uh, once we're, once we're in use. I think that is all I had as by way of background.
All right. I will say, this is awesome news. Uh, I'm really, really, really excited and thank you so much to our staff, uh, Patty, uh, Maylin. Every time I hear, we just got a grant, I'm like, that is the best money we ever spent investing in a grant writer. Uh, so, so very appreciative of, uh, of our public work staff and, um, our sustainability manager for continuing to be on the lookout for these types of opportunities. Um, Councilmember Landman?
This sounds fantastic. Um, do you have an estimate for the dollar value of the SREC credits that we're going to be?
No, I do not. Um, I, I don't, I believe that our building is part of the DC grid, which is a higher, higher value, uh, renewable energy credit value. Uh, but I, I don't, I don't, can't say offhand, but I will certainly let you know. Because we have been the direct recipient of RECs for the other, uh, PPA-generated power, we haven't, you know, we haven't got that information.
Could be quite substantial if it's, uh, if it's, you know, numerically the same as the other properties that are within the DC.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yes.
Excellent. Uh, Councilmember Hansak?
I just want to echo my colleagues. What a, what a breath of fresh air. Congratulations to your entire team. And it was a really, really excellent presentation that you just gave us. So, um, I hope you feel very proud, as I think you should be. This was, this is just beautiful to behold. And 71% energy. Wow. Awesome.
Great. All right. Uh, seeing no additional, Councilmember Schlegel?
Hello?
Yes, go right ahead. We're, we're having a little difficulty hearing you.
Mayor Searcy?
Okay, we can hear you now. I, I think,
It's frozen.
You're frozen. I know, I'm always frozen like this, so, okay. Okay, well, well, uh, we'll have Councilmember Schlegel send his follow-up. Um, 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 via email. But thank you so much, Director Braithwaite and all the staff that worked on this. This is really wonderful news. Okay, so now we're going to move to our last agenda item for the evening, which is the, um, on my list, uh, the Ask Me Council Relations Overview. So with that, I'm going to, okay, uh, while we do setup, we're just going to ask for five minutes. So if I can get everybody to come back by 10, that'll be great. Councilmember Schlegel, we're taking a quick, um, five-minute break.
Okay, my apologies. I had a question and then I dropped, my Zoom dropped out.
Yep, no worries. If you wouldn't mind sending that question to Director Braithwaite, that'll be great.
Okay, great. Okay, great.[447.46]
And particularly for those of you that are new to the council, um, I want to talk a little bit about labor relations in the public sector, specifically a little background on it here in um uh uh Tacoma Park, a little bit of the history and then just sort of functionally how this works in in the public sector. Uh unlike the private sector, which is governed under a single labor relations law, National Labor Relations Act, the public sector is specifically excluded from that, which means that all of you and and the unions that represent your employees have to come up with your own unique brand. And going back to nineteen eighty seven, I believe, the charter was amended to provide for uh collective bargaining for uh Tacoma Park employees. It basically fit two categories. There was a a uh law enforcement, a sworn police officer bargaining unit that was established. Uh there was a um a general bargaining unit uh established as well, which basically provided for representation of other city employees. There are exclusions in both of those bargaining units, uh largely management and supervisory personnel, although I think there are some some issues that you're still dealing with with uh uh respect to that. Law enforcement is represented here by the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local four hundred and uh ASME Local thirty three ninety nine. It's the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees. If you want the whole name, uh who who represent the balance of the um uh in employees. And then, as I said, there are specific employees that don't participate in their classifications, that don't participate in collective bargaining. And uh so so you've got that clear. Um uh just moving on here. Uh we can talk a little bit about how bargaining works in the uh public sector, in particularly here in uh uh Tacoma Park. When you look at a city as an employer, there's there's there's, this is a bit of an oversimplification, but I'll describe it to you. There's sort of two categories of 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 how the city is led, right? Obviously, the 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 governance, the leadership of the city is elected. It's the council and the mayor. And then you have a a management component uh that is led by the city manager here and the varying uh departments. It is the city management that engages in the uh uh collective bargaining that that does that work. Obviously, as leaders in the city, uh you're going to inform the positions that the city is going to take in collective bargaining. Typically, you're not going to participate in in uh uh negotiations. And there's a couple of really important reasons for that. Number one, you want consistency in terms of how the bargaining process works. You don't want a situation where people are stepping in and stepping out of the process. Uh that becomes very challenging. But perhaps more importantly, as the as the sitting governance of the city, as as the city council, you ultimately have to vote on whether to approve what is negotiated. Okay, so typically, you're going to want to be a step back from it so that you're in a position that when the agreement is reached and a recommendation comes to you in collective bargaining, any agreement that is reached is tentative in nature. It's tentative for a couple of reasons. Number one, you have to have an opportunity as the leadership of the city to take final action on the contract. But similarly, the union has its own internal process where their membership votes on whether or not to um uh im- uh approve the um uh agreement as well. So it's tentative until final action is uh taken. Couple of other features to 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 mention, and this all varies by by states. But in the state of Maryland, there's no right for public employees to ever strike. So in lieu of that, you you have some um impasse procedures under state law that are in place so that if if things reach a point where the parties can't reach an agreement, there's protocols or statutes in place. There's a there's neutral mediation that can um uh come in. And sometimes it's just, you know, it's a fresh pair of eyes that can uh help get get the parties more centered. And in some instances where it becomes necessary, there's something called interest arbitration, where basically you have a neutral third party who speaks to um uh resolve where those uh uh differences are. Uh moving on, I want to talk a little bit about sort of where we are and where we're hoping that that the relationship is going to um uh continue to build. Out of the uh twenty twenty two negotiations that you had with with the union, we actually began to do some work on um uh uh an approach called interspace problem solving. And basically, what what this is, is rather than throwing proposals back and forth at each other, yes, you have some of that, but more importantly, you have a process where both sides have the ability to bring up issues, not necessarily tied in immediately with a proposal, but the issue to get an uh a a matter on the table, discuss it, see what some of the challenges are in addressing those those issues. And the art to that kind of negotiation is that if the union makes a proposal to you, right, you might react by by saying, well, I got some issues and some challenges to. It's it's not that I don't understand the issue, but from a management perspective, there are there are difficulties in wanting to do this. So then the question becomes a dialogue. Again, not throwing paper back and forth, but a dialogue where you want to do this. You want to preserve the integrity of what you're proposing while at the same time trying to address the concerns from the other side, right? Because the sweet spot in collaboration is that I, as as a union, I want to have the ability to have you have make have you make some progress with us while at the same time making certain suggestions or concessions or or that kind of thing that brings your ability to say yes, right? Because it if I can, if I if I'm a negotiator and I can get past those obstacles with you and get you comfortable, then maybe you come back with a fresh pair of eyes. Sometimes it doesn't work out. Most times with 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 the right kind of approach, it does work. And so it was sort of with that approach in mind that we carried out at the twenty twenty two negotiations. And we took this idea of collaboration and we made some, what I thought were some pretty significant improvements in in your approach into the relationship. We wanted to put a labor management process in place, and we did, to begin to address issues that don't need to uh necessarily wait for um negotiations, issues of immediate concern. Sometimes it's something that the city has an interest in, sometimes it's the union. But to have a place where you're not negotiating, you're dialoguing and you're you're beginning to engage in a process where you're problem solving. That's the objective. It doesn't have to be adversarial. When you when when we sort of take the time and we dig in, we find ourselves more often than not that we're agreeing on more than we're disagreeing. You know, this is a this is a workforce that, like you, cares very deeply about the city. It's, yes, it it's also about the impact on on the union's members, but it's also people that are pretty smart in in understanding the city and how it works. So what this does is it takes us to um uh the next level of this discussion, which is to, as we're building out collective bargaining and as we're building this more collaborative uh uh approach, we're opening up another of another window of opportunity in terms of the union's relationship with both the city leadership and management. And that is the idea, to see the union or to begin to see the union and the employees of the cities as as key stakeholders to the issues that you as the city, leading the city, uh that that they can become an important voice in it. It's not collective bargaining. More often than not, it's outside of the scope of of bargaining. The term of art I you I like to use for it is what I call informed decision making, which is these are your decisions or the city manager's de- decisions, but the union wants to contribute to the discussion, whether it's it's in the form of standing committees or however you want to shape that. The notion is, is that when you have the unique perspective of your employees and and their union representatives contributing to the uh dialogue, at the end of the day, you're likely going to make a better informed choice, right? Because you have that additional asset provided to you, right? Uh examples that 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 I can give you where I personally have seen this work and where I I think ways that it could really manage manage uh here is as well. Um issues around the budget. I mean, you're looking for efficiencies, you're 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 looking for opportunities to be physically pru- prudent, obviously. Well, a lot of times, who's going to know better on some level than the people who are actually doing the work? I'm going to share just one very quick example on this. Um it's it's one of my favorite little stories. When I was doing work uh with Montgomery County Public Schools System, I had a conversation with the guy that maintains the this newly built high school at the time. He pointed out to me that there were ninety eight different light bulb designs in this one school and that the cost, because they didn't have the the uh economies of scale, were significant. And he only asked me one simple question. Do you think if you're going to design and build a new building, you may want to talk to the people who are going to have to maintain it to 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 get that feed that feedback? And I think it's a really, really good example of how this could work. This doesn't just happen overnight. I want to emphasize this, that if you're interested along with the union in embarking down this road, part of what you're going to have to do in your collaboration is to figure out what kinds of issues and what kinds of opportunities there are to collaborate with the unions to gain this kind of input. And at that moment, you're thinking about the union more as a stakeholder to the decision making that you uh want to uh do. It's a it's a marvelous approach. I've seen it work uh uh successfully in so many different instances. So let me talk in general about some um uh exam uh re- recommendations, right? If you're going to do this, uh there has to be a baseline commitment. Th- this is not something you want to do with reluctance. You want to you want to really see it as an opportunity uh for a very for for even a higher level of engagement with with the uh union. So you you want to make certain that that uh c- commitment is is there. And I can tell you from when we started this process, as I said, there's there wasn't ex- not, there was not just the idea of committing to this in principle, but I think over the past three years, um uh and I give both city manager and Brendan and his leadership team a lot of credit for this, where they're making incremental steps to really want to recalibrate this uh relationship. Um you got to think about practices here. And this is where it's not just traditional collective bargaining. You're thinking outside the box here. What kind of standing committees, what kind of um uh structures can you create that gives the union a pipeline for for communicating with you and vice versa? Again, not within a collective bargaining framework, but really in 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 its own lane. Um we think it's very important for that to work, that there has to be, side by side with that, a very strong commitment on both sides uh to uh good faith bargaining. And good faith bargaining, in my view, this me- means both sides coming in, rolling up their sleeves and having an intention to really want to reach an an uh agreement, to be less defensive with each other and more committed to really working issues through. And that really sets the tone for what we're talking about here. Um uh then finally, we we want to build. This is not the beginning of something, right? This is building on uh the work that's been done over the last three or four years. It's taking it to a different level. And what you're going to discover at, I think, as you do this approach and you do it successfully, there's this other thing that's going to grow increasingly, and it's called trust. You're trusting the 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 union leadership in terms of their commitment to these principles and conversely, they're um feeling trust towards you for uh for engaging this process in a way that their members and the union have a lot of ownership with you in the city and how it's going to be led in into the future. My closing comment is is simply this. This is from my personal life into my work life. Tacoma Park is an amazing city. And it is with its progressive nature, with its um uh with its commitment to try to get to the right place. You combine that with two great unions, the uh like ASME and UFCW, and the possibilities are endless for the difference you can make, not only in the life of the employees, but in the life of the citizens of Tacoma Park as well. That's those are my comments.
Well, thank you so much. Um I I appreciate your closing statement because it's very true. Um we have wonderful staff that's so committed to the city. And um one of the things that I think is even more important um is that we are trying to transform our engagement. Um and uh thank you, David, because that, you know, some of your prior work with the city kind of helped to lead to some of the things that we're doing now. Um for example, um the uh council member, Divala, the mayor pro tem and myself, uh we meet with um both unions, um which is something that has been really useful for us to do to kind of have this away when when we're not in negotiations. That's another thing. I'm glad that we have time when we're not in negotiations where the council can council members can actually sit down with union staff and kind of talk directly one on one on some of the things um that would be beneficial for us to work on collaboratively. And and those notes from those meetings are shared with the entire council. Um so everyone's aware of those conversations as a way um to again move in the direction of having more direct communication between um our union staff and um and the council. I mean, one of the things that I would uh like to just ask about um is, you know, are there other best practices and ways in which, you know, because we're as a council, we're in a we're in a unique space because you you started off just perfectly. It was like, hey, you guys, when there's negotiations, you need to have that degree of separation, which which we try to do. But are there other best practices of when you're not in negotiations? So like, for example, we have our our meeting with the union staff. Are there other things that you may have heard that other electeds are doing with their unions? As a way to kind of have more direct, open lines of communication um beyond like what we're doing, which is sitting down once a quarter? Like, are you hearing of other things that other communities may be doing?
Well, my main body of experience is with Montgomery County Public School System, which has a very
Different.
Right, it's different. And I want to emphasize too is is that in this kind of a design, there is no one size fits all, right? You you I think the best practices are finding ways on po- major policy issues, particularly issues that have a direct or indirect direct impact on union members, the budget, um safety issues, healthcare, you know, there's there's a there's um a lot of. And you're going to find also, by the way, that I know you don't have a lot of people who live here in the city uh who 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 work for um for ASME members, but you have some, right, who care about issues that are outside of a uh collective bargaining framework too and want that kind of uh opportunity for for um input. So I would, the the practice that you want to look for is a practice that you want to create. And I would think at a baseline, what kinds of possibilities are there with issues? There would be uh, you know, a value added proposition, if you will, to the 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 council, to the city manager, that gives you that additional uh per uh per perspective. Now, in the public school system, we have a lot of committees established. Um and I'm happy to share with the city manager and you uh language examples that I think can show you how how this has worked elsewhere. It's not a new concept. It exists in a lot of areas and it's fairly common in in the public sector. So uh we can certainly help you identify some of those practices.
Hold on one second, I I I am learning to deal with mics. So I think, okay, I'm going to turn on.
Uh, looks like there's all up there.
Brendan, I think city manager Dispirito, I thought I saw you beginning to speak. Do you have your mic? Okay.
Push your button.
Hold on one second, let me get your mic going, okay?
I do have a few comments, but I will defer to my esteemed colleague, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Uh well, thanks so much to David for doing this presentation, for working with us sort of over the last um three years and also to um the mayor and city manager for helping us set this up because we've been kind of advocating for this for almost three years now. So it's good to, you know, actually be here talking directly with um the council. Um I'll just, I don't want to rehash a lot of old history, but since most people, you know, have only been here for two years or less or six months or wherever we're at now, um is that traditionally, the issue has been the union has an issue concern, contact city council, you know, through email, standing up at a council meeting, and then there's crickets. There is no reply to the email. There's no statement, you know, at the council meeting about how the council members um feel on the issue. And so then it has sent, and I think part of that's tied up in this notion, probably some incorrect information shared by the city attorney and labor lawyer that um council members can never talk to union leaders, which simply isn't true. There's no law that says that. Um while there is some separation for collective bargaining, there's all kinds of issues like David speaking about that happen before, during and after collective bargaining that are not actual bargaining issues um that are important to share. So um I mean, one pretty simple way to improve communication would be just like any other constituent, you know? If union leader emails you, calls you, reply, you know? I at least that it seems pretty simple, but I mean, that could be a really good starting point.
Thank you, thank you, Brendan, for that. And I think I just want to clarify, um because in the past, in full transparency, we would be in negotiations for a very, very, very long time, a very long time. So i- i- you know, as Mr. Rodich mentioned in his presentation, we we have to have that degree of separation when there's negotiations that are happening. Um and so in many cases, those messages sometimes would come during negotiations, which would create a a bit of a difficult place for members of council to be in. And that's why I'm glad that we're in a place now where there's more dead time when we're not in negotiations, um where we can have a little bit more of free communication, um which we we have been doing. But I also just, I keep going back to your point because that's the point that I am constantly having to face, um trying to make sure that we don't go into negotiations during those exchanges as well. So there's this this line that that I know that I'm cognizant of in terms of trying to make sure that we are providing um opportunities for open dialogue, but being mindful of the fact that for the council, um we we have to be careful as to not cross that line into usurping the um negotiations process. And so I think that we we've developed a bit of a stride now with that. So for example, having the union um present during the budget cycle this year, which was new, um having the um presenting to the council during the the budget discussions, um having our regular check-ins where we're talking about issues and those notes are shared with the entire council. I I think that we're moving in a direction where we're we're finding those spaces and opportunities where it is appropriate for that direct communication to happen. Um but it is important for us to still keep in mind that, you know, as it relates to negotiations, we have to make sure that we have that that line that the electeds, um it's appropriate for us not to cross. And so we're still trying to to figure out that right balance. Um but we are trying to create more opportunities. Um deputy, I'm sorry, city manager Dispirito, did you have some points?
You can continue, it's fine.
Okay, great. Um council member Lambon. Oh, so hold on one second, let me. No worries.
Sorry, turned off my own mic, I'm working on that whole system. Um thank you for the presentation, it was very helpful um for me as a new council member. And we have been carefully instructed by the city attorney and the labor attorney on staying out of what's not our business. And so to a certain degree, maybe over overly cautious from your perspective, Mr. Smith. Um I have two questions. My first question is, I would like to know what the role of a trustee is because that's not a title I'm familiar with, so I know what the trustee for ASME does. And secondly, you mentioned um Mr. Rodich, standing committees um as a way to um have the kind of conversations with informed decision making um work more smoothly. Do those standing committees, in your experience, actually contain electeds? Or are they comprised of members of the union and members of the uh of uh management? I'm just curious because, you know, that would be one of the areas in which, I don't know whether that would cross a line or not, and I'm curious.
Well, if again, if if the notion is the union trying to contribute to a dialogue to further, you know, your knowledge on on a a a given issue, situation like that, it's it's appropriate. I think in most instances, I think in most instances, it's probably going to be under the purview of the city manager where council will say, look, there's this issue that we want to work on and we need some recommendations on what to, to, to do. And it's to make certain that the union isn't an afterthought, but as I said, is a key stakeholder who's contributing uh to that. And how you balance, you, you know, that kind of leadership activity is really internal to you, right, in, in figuring it out. It, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it won't violate the um the no talking rule simply because it's typically not an issue that is going to involve collective bargaining. Who you use as a healthcare provider and the process that you want to go through for screening, that kind of thing. That's a decision that you're going to make. The people that utilize that benefit can certainly give you a viewpoint on what's worked and what's not. See what I mean? Does, does that speak to your question?
Yeah. Oh, and uh I uh, the question about the trustee. And I can un, unmute you all, so if you want to kind of talk a little bit about your roles. Hold on one second. There you go.
Trustees um basically takes a part in an audit of our books, which is like one small Bank of America account. Um, but then they're usually also involved in other, other areas of the union. Um, Patty's our membership chair, so she's been helping with um orientations for new members, that kind of. Former vice president, she's been around a while, worked in most city departments, once I run up.
That's true, you all know the bingo card story. Yeah, no, I was, my answer was going to be, I dabble because it is, you know, the, the very specific trustee role is very concentrated and, you know, it's, it's, it's the audit piece. But I do sit in on the E board meetings and sort of speak my mind. Yeah, without, you know, an official everyday job, other than the, the membership.
I mean, I think that as far as policies and things, and, and I do think that the city attorney and the management lawyer have gone well beyond what is helpful, recommended, best labor practice as far as trying to shut down communication between council members and the union. But then there's issues, policies that, that you've all be considering that it would be useful if, if you asked us at the front end, hey, we're thinking about doing this, or we're thinking about co-sponsoring this, you know, Juneteenth party on Juneteenth. Or, oh, you know, there's a lot of other issues where if, if you said, or, you know, could email us and we could ask our members, what do you think about this? What do you think the impact's going to be? As opposed to us hearing about it later, then trying to raise our concerns, feeling like our input wasn't, you know, sought out or appreciated. Um, that that could be a much better way of going.
And I think um to, to that point, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to turn some mics off because we're getting a little bit of feedback. You can keep yours, um, you're not live yet. I think um uh one of those things, and, and I, and this point can be directed to um our city management um is, you know, working with the city management team in terms of helping to identify um those instances where we are working on policies that um would warrant um a check-in with the union so that we can make sure that that, that has occurred. I think um, you know, in the past, there's been sometimes, because again, we don't, I am not, uh, I do not direct, even though you're the union, you are also staff, right? So it is important for me to go through the city management, because that's their role, right? Um, in order to make sure that they are working with you because of how our, our, our form of government is set up. Um, we do not direct, the only people we manage is the city manager, right? Um, so wanting to make sure that we're identifying those instances when we're working through agenda items and working through different policies and trying to identify which of those policies warrant check-in with the union um so that we can plan ahead. Um, I think is something that is, that is feasible and, and something that we can do as part of some of our, our regular uh meeting planning. That said, you know, we, you know, would need to rely on the city management um in order to work with us to identify when those, when those topics that may warrant some sort of union feedback um would, would come up. Mr. Disperdo, I don't want to speak for the city management team, but.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. You know, I've always felt here and elsewhere that, you know, if I were doing, if my team and I were doing our job appropriately, there would be, there should be precious little opportunities where the union is frustrated enough that they feel they need to go to council. And that means we ought to try on the management side to work very, very sincerely, authentically, credibly, hard, and, and hard with the union in a genuine way to try to find some common ground on issues that really matter to the employees or matters of, uh, issues that sometimes they might derive from management as well and say, hey, we've got an issue, but we'd like to work it out, get your feedback and see if we can solve this together. I, I think there's a number of great techniques. Uh, standing committees were mentioned, we stood one up this, this past year. The Employee uh Health Advisory Committee uh is an ongoing committee. Uh, it, it's not necessarily union-based per se, but it's employee-based and it includes members of both unions. Uh, that, uh, you'll see when the contract comes for the new healthcare provider. Uh, I'm going to be very clear on the contribution that that standing committee, even as new as they are, made in terms of their vetting, helping uh HR and, and other staff vet proposals that came in and ultimately finding a consensus on recommendations as to the best path forward. That's a classic example in my mind of, of how it can really work well. Uh, we're also working on standing up a um safety committee that is essentially employees, where we're going to review accidents. We're going to review uh, you know, near misses and incidents and things. And how can we improve safety throughout the organization? I think it's critical, again, who's going to know better than the frontline employees? Nobody. So, you know, it behooves us in management to listen well and to, to, to engage and seek that type of uh feedback. Uh, we also, I, I want to thank the employees for their work with me this past year on things like reviewing the RFP for the complement class study. Uh, we work together on looking at that because ultimately, we want there to be credibility. We don't want to impose from above. And then there's processes, you know, garbage in, garbage out. If, 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 if the employees feel that the process, um, in this case, a study is illegitimate, then how are they going to feel about the outcome of the study? So it's things like that, that, that we really appreciate their uh choosing to be involved with us on that. Uh, we also, for the first time, engage the employees in surveys on the budget. So sometimes it's standing committees, sometimes it's practices. And practices that, at least I intend to continue annually, to provide an opportunity for employees, such as with the budget, to give us uh feedback on their ideas and suggestions. And this is early on in the process before uh the senior leadership team has advised me as to what they think should go in the next fiscal year's budget proposal. Um, ultimately, I was uh very pleased with some very creative ideas and suggestions and things like that. And uh, you know, we worked well together, I think, in that process. We, you know, we had some uh recognition and, and reward of, of, of uh their effort uh that, that we were able to do. Uh, I'd also say one other thing is that um we uh want to be able to look ahead together to new ways to collaborate. You know, for instance, uh, we suggested, and, and David had it well on his uh PowerPoint here, joint work group, it's like subcommittees to study particular matters of mutual interest. You know, we haven't done a lot of that so far, but we could. And I think that makes a lot of sense. I've done that other cities with uh some great mutual success between management and the employees. And also ongoing trainings involving both parties. We, we need to listen to the employees as to what they think, what type of training that they think would be most valuable, pertinent to them, uh, what will help them the most, which will help keep them safe, help keep them ahead of the curve in evolving operations and uh, you know, as, as their complicated uh jobs evolve. And also there may be some things that we, as management, feel are important uh that, that they'd be training for. But again, we don't want to have the impression or the reality that it's just a top-down thing all the time, that we're just going to impose this and say, hey, you know, start next month on this date, you know, it's mandatory and here, here you go, and this is what you'll be doing. Uh, I'd, I'd really rather have uh more open conversations in advance about, you know, what trainings uh we're contemplating, what types of things the unions thinking would be helpful. And let's maybe try to design some of that together.
Thank you. Ms. Malin, would you, are you following up on that, also of Councilmember Honsack?
In addition to like the, the healthcare review and all that, I know that HR is.
Oh, hold on one second, I'm sorry, let me turn your mic, there you go, sorry.
And then I was talking about reviewing all the personnel policies, many of which have not been updated since, I think, the seventies. I know I was in HR briefly, so I've seen these typewritten Xerox copies there. I think that's an excellent opportunity to involve the union at some level when new um, new proposals to how to revise these policies come about. I think that's an excellent time to, to bring the union folks in to take a look at that and say, yes? Or did you think about this? Because I, I have a feeling it's going to be, you know, a, a couple of experts over here doing it and not necessarily. So I, I just want that to be considered.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Okay, Councilmember Honsack?
Thank you. I, I have been looking forward to an opportunity like this since I started two and a half years ago. So I'm delighted that we're having this conversation. Um, and it's really great to meet you because I heard a lot about you when I came on council in twenty twenty-two. I, I just wanted to share as um a newer, newer, but also incumbent council member, um, some of my, my experiences in relating it to what I'm learning now. One is, is, and, and hopefully this will also be useful to my new colleagues and to our union members. I think two of the things that I found most difficult, and I still feel like I'm, I'm navigating as a person that's two and a half years in on council, is figuring out kind of that balance with um, you know, you have your own opinion. Initially, when you come in, you got all these ideas about what you think you want to accomplish. And you think, oh, I can listen to whoever I need to, to, to formulate my opinion. And then I want to share it with the right person who will have influence over that. But, but, but fairly quickly, maybe a little slower than some folks would like, you know, you realize that A, um, you alone don't represent the whole council and that's why we have a voting process, right? Um, but it's really easy when you talk to uh really anybody, but particularly any staff member and particularly union members to particularly trip, trip on yourself in the first year at least. Um, sort of not realizing that maybe you're saying something out of, out of turn, you know, um, and, and that it could be misconstrued because as you just said, you know, let's assume I'm on a steep learning curve. Well, any staff member could also theoretically be on a steep learning curve on what is an appropriate, what's an appropriate relationship? What should I say to convey or, you know, think that I'm representing some, or not thinking, you know, that I'm representing a larger group than just myself or my own opinion? Um, and then it might be uh interpreted in the wrong way by whoever on the other side, you know, you're talking to. So I, I found myself tripped up on that. I found that to be confusing to navigate early on. I do think trainings are one of the ways to do that and maybe scenarios. Um, but it's not just in relationship to the unions, just so you know. It's, um, I mean, very recently, I think I'm looking at Manager Disperdo. I, I, I had my hand appropriately slapped for, for, you know, for, for language that I wasn't intending to, to say the way I was. And I, I've been learning, right? So um, and, and, and it's because we're all trying to get things done, you know, and we're trying to share information. But it's really easy to slip into that space. I just want to share that as, as a council member that's been doing this for a little while. And uh, and likewise, I find it sometimes really challenging to talk to individual staff members. For example, the other day, I was at Public Works and it was such a, it's like so refreshing. Suddenly, I'm standing there, there's nobody else around, and I really want to know, you know, what, what do they really experience? I'm going to be honest with you, I asked them about Juneteenth, you know, I was like, how does it feel? You know, I, I wanted to know, you know, but I, but I also was worried about what if I cross a line here? What if I, what if I suggest something that's inappropriate? So I tried really hard to be just in listening mode, you know, and, but it's really, really hard to, to find that right balance and um, and not confuse the party who you're talking to on either side. I think if you're staff talking to us and vice versa. So um, I guess one of my questions, uh, uh, and let me share also another experience is that I worked at a nonprofit for uh ten years before coming here. And uh, what Manager Disperdo just said to us really speaks to me. We have this council manager form of government. And the reason my nonprofit fell apart, actually, the reason I left them is because our leadership, our top leader, um, and I'm the only person who did not sign a non-disclosure clause, so I can say this. She, she, no, this is really important because what you said is so, so important and we all take it to heart. She did not allow freedom of speech within the organization. And ultimately, the union, the staff wanted to speak directly to the board, which is like the council, right? They wanted to talk directly. And so we began to do that because there was no other way. There was no other way to get that message across. So I do think if Manager Disperdo and our other managers are really doing their job, you know, then hopefully that isn't necessary. Um, because it really, I mean, not that you wouldn't talk to us, right? But that, that we would be, you would, we, your, your voices would be elevated appropriately and, and those things would be worked out. So um, but I don't think there should be a hard barrier between us. And I'd, I'd like to better understand where's the soft part. I think that part has been really, really difficult. I, I am wondering, and here's my final question to you. What do you, the union members currently, I'm not saying this is right or wrong. What do you currently advise your union members about talking to council? Individual council members?
Uh, we don't advise them anything. I mean, they, they can speak to whoever they want, you know, whenever they want. Um, I mean, I think that there's one distinction to be made and that sometimes gets conflated is, you know, the council is supposed to go through the city manager for functions that city staff do. And during Labor Management Committee meetings, where we wholeheartedly support that and, because it, it creates, you know, issues for employees when a council member is contacting them and they're like, do I have to drop everything I'm doing? Are they just passing this on from a resident or they want me to do it? So yeah, I think that definitely, you know, needs to go through the city manager office. But if it's an issue relating to the union or what you feel about um how the union might be perceive as city policy or something you're even just thinking about, you can reach out to us directly. I'm not saying it's kind of like, I'm trying to make an in-run around the city manager. You can copy him or you can talk to me, but it's, it's a totally different issue than, you know, council members contacting staff directly. If you want to ask me about art stuff, then yeah, it should go through, you know, Devin or, or Rob. But if you want to ask me about anything union-related, then just ask me, you know, email, phone call, whatever.
I mean, I will add the caveat, and I, I see David, David, you're, you could go right ahead, you can.
No, I'm sorry, what I was going to add, and this is a really, really good conversation. Because the relationship is in a healthier space today, if you don't mind my saying that, than it was uh three, three and a half years ago, I feel like there's enough trust that a couple of things. One is, you may be at a point where, you know, the city manager, the union leadership, maybe somebody from, from the council as well, can sit down and have a conversation with more specificity about what uh, what is appropriate and what is not. It's uh, council member, where when you're talking about softening the edges, I think the more that we can add clarity to what. that we can add clarity to what's appropriate and not, that accomplishes that. And I'm a big fan of exemplars, because sometimes it's not simple to do it in black and white. Sometimes, here's an example of where it's appropriate, here's an example of, don't do this, right? And I think there's also a way with a member of the union who approaches you perhaps out of bounds on this ish, on a matter that's involved with bargaining, just to simply say to them, I appreciate your concern in bringing it to me, talk to the union leadership, that's the appropriate place, and we'll see where things go. As long as that's consistently applied, but I would think really seriously about this issue, so as one of the subject of training, perhaps as part of the council orientation, how you talk about that, because I agree, part of the problem is, is if you think you're being told that between September 1st and January 1st, don't come near me, right? I know that's not what you're saying, but sometimes that's what gets heard. Problem is, is that if that's what somebody's hearing, they're not listening to anything else that you're saying. And so I think getting into more specificity about what kind of dialogue is out of bounds versus, you know, other, what we talked about tonight is a good example of some really positive things. I mean, let's talk about what you can do, right? And this may offer another opportunity to keep a healthy dialogue going with council members, regardless of the time of year.
All right, thank you so much. And I think you hit the nail on the head, because I was actually going to chime in and say, well, it depends, right? It depends on what you want the union's opinion about, because depending on the topic, it is something that city management should probably, most definitely be aware of, right? So, because it could inadvertently lead to a directive to staff. So it's one of these things where I hear the point of people saying, and that our lawyers have said, hey, don't respond, but that's not exactly what our lawyers have said. It is, you have to be equipped enough to understand what is a bargaining item and what is not. And if you are a new council member and you're not as familiar with that nuance, it becomes a lot easier to just say, I'm keeping my mouth shut. And so part of it is, you know, as we are continuing this dialogue and continuing to identify those safe spaces where we can talk about things, and understanding what those things that are appropriate to discuss, regardless of whether or not we're in negotiations, and what are those things where, when we're in negotiations, nope, we need to keep at arms length, and everyone understands the rules of the road, and everyone agrees to abide by those rules, I think that's going to make it a lot easier as it relates to council-union direct communication. But I think what's even more important is that we're continuing to build that trust where there's union-city management communication, because I also am a firm believer, if that is happening well, then you probably aren't going to be beaten down our doors much, right? And so wanting to make sure that we're continuing to build that trust to ensure that our staff enjoy working here and feel like they're supported, not just as it relates to the city management team, but also as it relates to the council. And I just, we're at time? Sorry, we're at 11 o'clock now.
Mayor Sutcliffe, is it possible for me to ask a question?
Sure, Councilmember Schlegel.
Yeah, thank you.
I can't see you at all. No, it's okay.
Yeah, I know, there's no way for me to signal. In the, as a kind of a pressure release valve, regardless of how, I do see the value in the council trying to work into its routine, like if there are things emerging around new equipment, totally new protocols, totally new software, for example, with performance metrics, maybe like thinking about how we can make sure that the union and all employees really have been able to weigh in on the ramifications, whether that's through us or through management, I think that's good. I just wondered whether, as a final pressure release valve, there's a way that in the annual evaluation of the manager, the union participates in that in some way, because we haven't gotten to that point in my first year on the council.
I would say that that is something that would need to be discussed amongst the council.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no more lights, and given that it's 11 o'clock, thank you all so much for coming out, we really appreciate it, we appreciate you sticking it out to the end, and I definitely look forward to continued communication with you all as we work to rebuild, rebuild trust and communication between the union, the council, and our city management team. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Everyone, motion to adjourn, y'all all right? All right, thank you all very much, meeting's adjourned.